Just so you guys know, can I get everybody's attention before we start? This letter is from our HR. And this is a letter specifically to each one of the commissions. She'd like to meet with each of you. Plus, attached to it is our contract with them. And I wanted you to have that information right now. Dan isn't gonna get it, but that is just for you guys. And it's not on the agenda or anything because the bill's coming through today. And that's why I wanted you to have this for the bill, to approve the bill. Okay. So she is her own entity? I thought you said she worked for more. Well, she does work for more, but, okay, um, yeah, we're gonna go through her consulting. It'll be separate from work.
Video ready?
What's that?
Video ready?
It is on, yes.
Okay. So nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting in Mercer County Commission to order. Uh, we have the agenda. Um, we got a couple additions here. Um, we got two duplicate, uh, check requests.
No, one's on there. The second one is also for the Hay- Health Pharmacy in Hazen, seventy-three fifty-four.
So there's one on there, but we're gonna have two.
Yeah, I didn't realize there was two.
Um, and then we have a wage request under landfill. Is that?
They just wanna add that to the discussion.
To the discussion at the landfill, okay.
Yeah.
And then emergency battery purchase.
Yep.
Is that under landfill too?
No, not that's for the courthouse.
Emergency battery?
Other business?
Well, it's Monday, it went down and we needed to order them.
It's easy.
And we should get, not the new ones, but, you know, we'll talk about it.
And then you said Wes is not coming?
Wes, yep, he called and said to take him off the agenda.
Okay. Any other additions or changes?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Could you review the changes for me?
So under landfill, we have a wage request.
Okay.
And then other, other business, we have two duplicate war, um, request changes. We only had one on the agenda, but there's actually two for the same entity. And then there's emergency battery purchase under other business. And then Wes Klein is not gonna be here, so.
Thank you.
It's his slot.
I would like to add something else to it. I would like to add, under the preliminary budget, um, HR position.
Okay.
Which one?
Under preliminary budget, that would be the eleven forty. HR budget, okay. Rick, did you have something?
Yes, uh, Craig called and, uh, we just wanted to state about the weather, um, event, which is a statement.
Okay, so other business?
Other, other business.
Okay. Weather?
Yeah, weather statement.
Okay. No, that happens in a couple days. Anything else?
Not even a day.
Yeah. Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, we got two sets of minutes. Um, let's do the July nineteenth ones first.
I think we had some question on verbiage on, that we were waiting for the letters.
I'll go get that letter, but it says.
They sort of was.
Will.
Okay.
Stated will.
While we get that, let's go to the July twenty-fifth ones then.
Okay, just to double check.
Yep, no problem.
Good morning, Marvin. Didn't even see you moving in. You must've snuck in.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything, I looked up and there's Marvin sitting there.
Very stealthy.
Is there a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes, special meeting?
Rick, did Sheriff Turner's talked to you about, I think there was again some verbiage different? Did he talk to you?
I couldn't hear you.
Did Terry talk to you?
About what's different on this?
Yeah, but maybe he had talked to Carmen.
I couldn't hear, on the meeting for the, I couldn't hear what Terry had said.
Wait for Carmen to come back in, 'cause I thought he said he had talked to her.
Been a long time since we have been hung up on the minutes. No, just saying.
Words, words make all the difference.
They're important.
They're important.
Well, we can, uh.
Can we?
Make a motion to approve, second and then amend.
Yeah, if there's any changes.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Discussion.
Okay, was, there were some changes?
What's?
I'm waiting for Carmen.
Okay.
What were you asking?
Yes.
What were you asking on, about Terry?
'Cause he has in here about the five percent raise across the board or flat amount equivalent to five percent. He said he stated it differently. But I thought he talked to Carmen about it, so maybe she.
He, I talked to him briefly on that this morning. Trying to see where that's at here again. Oh, that was on the.
On the special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, that was the one that you were on via Zoom.
On Zoom, yeah, that he. That, that's where he explained it this morning. He wanted a five percent raise across the board or a flat, uh, amount with equivalent of a five.
For the medium percent, right?
But I think, is that what's missing is the?
The medium.
Medium.
I didn't, I didn't hear him saying five percent across the board, but he did mention about equivalent, uh, five percent with, on the average of his department.
Right, so average would be the mean. I think that is the portion that is.
Not in there.
Not in there.
Yep.
You got it, right?
This is the one where they had, uh, this one, where it was open and they said that we needed to get it.
Well, I don't know if you have it, but, uh. Try to find it in my pile, might be in there.
Carmen, we have a question on the July twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, did we make a motion? Anything I missed?
Yeah, motion by Jean, second by Liza to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes, but we're in discussion.
July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth.
Okay, so I'm in twenty-fifth, Jean made the motion, who seconded it?
Liza.
Liza?
Now we're in.
Approved.
No, we're in discussion.
Oh, discussion with the twenty-fifth, okay. Let me get there.
There was discussion about, there might be some verbiage that need to be changed, needs to be changed.
Right here. Okay, where are we at?
Under, under the sheriff.
Okay, yes. Uh, okay, I talked to Terry about that yesterday. Are you talking to what Terry said? Yeah, he talked to me yesterday and that is the change that I made after talking to him. Instead of the average being the lowest paid, he wanted the average across the board.
Oh, so this reflects the change?
Yes, this reflects the change that I talked to Terry about.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, yes, yep, I got it and that's what he wanted.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Now back to the July nineteenth minutes. So the question on, uh.
That was resolved.
That's resolved, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Rick to approve the July nineteenth minutes as presented, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jamie. Any discussions? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay, uh, review bills.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, just trying to find.
Get in your space, Jamie.
Oh, no.
For your stuff.
Yeah, I don't, this, I read, you gave me a copy, so I was trying to find it, it's.
I'm getting your space.
I couldn't find it, of what I was looking for.
Hey, Jamie and Liza, did you guys get that copy where they said that it was good? Okay, let me get you a copy of that too.
Okay, thank you.
Did the rest?
I'm gonna make a copy. Did you get a copy?
Copying out.
That is the final? That like ninety, twenty, you bridge it through.
Oh, yes, I did get a copy of that.
You did get a copy of that?
So where is it? Is this in the budget?
Nope.
Are we holding this then to discuss?
I think we should.
Huh? Then I think we should, I don't know where we wanna put it.
If we do. The consultant.
The consultant. Kind of.
I guess, I gotta let all those things.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Okay.
Did you get to the last two words? I didn't get they were.
It said vendor number.
Number, okay, I was like, pretty sure.
We're just going through our bills right now. Um, there's a sign-in sheet if you.
I, I got it, yep. When do these go to? I don't think so. They had to go in the paper for two weeks as a public notice. I don't, and I saw it in there this week. And I was around for the horses. I ran last week.
I'm not sure.
And this, I know, I thought they said two weeks. Yeah, I can't, I guess I didn't.
The horses are the gift that keeps on giving.
Thank you.
Did we ever sell leave, you know?
Okay, what's that?
Did we ever sell leave, you know?
The horses.
The horses.
This.
Never heard of them.
No, well.
No.
No, I think, no, I shouldn't have.
Carmen?
Yes?
You accidentally gave me the exact, this, I need the one that Jamie got. Please, thank you.
You've got it.
This is where we positively closed it.
Wait, yep, I don't have that one. That's you gave me, thank you.
Well, I lost my other one.
Did you, you have both of them, right?
Yes.
This I actually got.
Yeah. Yeah.
This I actually got.
Papers.
Yes.
Yeah, I need to give it, so.
I got that in an email. Thank you. That's just for information, right?
Yes, it's history right now, we're living.
Well, that's the way it should be, so we have official documentation.
Yes.
But she was, this one.
We're shooting eighteen tomorrow, that's for you.
Now, I guess.
We got a small order this week, once we came, it was a very big one.
Uh-huh.
It was very hot, getting everything in. Orly papers waterfall, number one.
Out of the, um, what do they call that, the? Water sample? It's usually like a truckload or something.
Oh. I'll talk to her.
Yeah, it's that, um. Just on the south side of the tracks on forty-nine. There's that thing there where farmers can hook up.
Oh, it's for that, okay. Yeah, we have one in Hazen too, okay.
Everybody just came in, we're just going through our bills right now. It's a little quiet in there.
Where are our, where are our cattle cards for the cow? I'm trying to feel them. They're like out. Oh, oh, like in the ones.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do these have like a shelf life on them or something?
Must've just needed more, even though I thought we got a whole bunch last year.
I thought we got like eight or nine last year.
Quite a few, man. But I know that we do have our inmates and we have to be able to probably inmates that we have.
Well, and some are going out and not coming back, other facilities are not.
Returning, okay.
We got that, we gotta make sure we get them back. I know you both do know that before it was, we had to make sure we had enough in case another one's occurred and all of them had to be placed in that.
Yeah, and that's what we got some of last year.
It makes sense then, so.
That's dry grass. Might as well. Lot of money.
Were you trying to revolve a number there or?
No, I'm wondering if we want this one, 'cause I thought if we have these, that we were taking care of it, but now we're sourcing it out. I didn't know we were doing that. For a long time. Or am I wrong on that?
I'm trying to remember. I remember we talked about them last year, cleaning up. I don't know if we have the right equipment or.
I don't know. Might be something I ought to get, maybe, maybe Jean.
Jean, do you know anything about them cleaning up the cattle yards?
No.
The road department?
Maybe clean some out?
Yeah, they have a vendor do it. State rate's only good Sunday through Thursday.
It's the whole time.
They don't, I, I'm not gonna give it to you on the weekends, but.
Anything.
Okay.
You just gotta pay me right, look down the numbers.
Okay, gotcha.
So you gotta make sure you call and say, you all have state rate?
Not that anybody have that, I've, I've looked at all the, just to see if they got the state rates. Is that the last one? Oh, we have some more out. This guy's stuck, he's in a fan here.
I was in a hole.
I noticed my hand down.
I was in a hole, but I thought it, thought it was a goal.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to look at the last one right there, and she's like, "Liza." Don't worry, I think I... I turned my date for July, just see it off.
I think I won month and a half of you. That's why I knew I was about to drink more, right?
Yeah. Haven't drank in a while.
Some are a quarter behind.
Yes. Yeah. I'm on it now. Turned it.
I'm done.
Okay. All right, any questions on the bills?
We have that one that we wanted held out.
Yeah.
In discussion.
So, since we have a contract here for HR consulting and a bill for them, I guess, I don't, I don't know if the commission ever authorized outside services for HR.
Should've been brought to us prior to the meeting.
Right.
Right?
So I guess...
So it's HR of the county? Then what I want, if you guys are gonna refuse to pay that?
That's not what we're saying.
And acknowledge it, I want a motion.
We're just wondering, you know, we don't have outside HR in the, in the budget.
We do through the EM.
Through the EM.
And that is why they're, you're taking money to cover my fund as your auditor from that fund. There's no difference. There is funding. And it isn't even touching any of the county's money. What it's touching is extra scholarship, grant money coming in that we wouldn't have if I wasn't doing what I was doing, and I agreed to do that. So we have money in there. It isn't gonna touch, it ain't gonna go over no EM budget. It won't go over nothing. This county needs a third party, and I am the HR of this county. It was in the description of my job when I took over April first.
Does the description of the auditor allow you to...
The description of the auditor...
Can I, can I finish, please, Carmen? Does the description of the auditor give you authorization to sign a contract on behalf of the county?
Yes, it does, as HR it does.
I disagree. I believe it's the chairman that's the only one that has the authorization to sign a contract on behalf of the county with the authority granted by the rest of the commission to do so.
I disagree.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consulting contract that we got, and then we can pay the bills?
Do I need a motion?
Need something either way.
Either way.
Is there a motion to approve or disapprove of the contract for Bent Consulting?
Well, let's do, let's do this. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the... I don't even know how to make the motion. Do I make a motion to approve the consulting bill? HR consulting bill?
You can make a motion to approve that.
Well, so that we can move forward. It could be, I mean, it could be voted down. Sorry, that's not for discussion right now.
Are you making a motion or?
Yes, I need that motion.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the bill for the Bent Consulting, is there a second?
Second the bill.
Okay, now I can...
Okay, Jamie seconded the bill. Any discussion?
That's what I was getting, now we can discuss the bill and, as I said, it can either be voted up or down at this point. If it's voted down, then it, then it's a no. So that's why I was saying, we can make the mo, I could've made the motion either way, but I'd rather make the motion to approve and then we, if it's, the majority wants to vote it down, then they can vote it down. That's my...
Okay.
Opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other discussion?
The current bill that is there, I think, for services that have already been contacted, but I think if there's any further contract, I think there should be, just have discussion had.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can I get some clarification on what you said, Jeanie? What are you saying? As EM, I sign contracts all the time, as auditor, I sign contracts within my department. Why is that different?
Just based off the chairman's...
No.
I think it needs to be looked into.
County department has signed contracts like they're supposed to if it's within their department. I don't come to you guys to do my job.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jeanie?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
Liza?
Nay.
Rick?
Uh, you're not a part of the...
We're in voting part.
We're in the middle of a, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll vote nay as well.
Okay.
Without bills.
The person making the motion to approve cannot change his...
Marv is actually correct. Because if you make a motion to approve it...
Can't vote no.
Yeah, you can't vote no.
I can't?
No, Marv is correct.
I did not know that.
Yeah, Marv is correct on that one.
Sorry, I stand corrected, I have to vote yes, I guess.
Okay, that motion fails.
Sorry, um, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Marv. All right, is...
Rick voted nay.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the remaining bills?
Also move.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote nay. That motion passes.
I learn something every day.
Yep. All right, next up, resident zone update, Buster?
Sorry.
Yep, you're fine, Cindy.
You're okay, Cindy.
Oh, I'm cool.
Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioner Frye and the fellow commissioners. Uh, I think everybody knows me, so, uh, but I'm here today actually representing the city of Hazen. My official title with the city, of course, is Economic Developer Hazen, Economic Development Group. And we're in the process of looking to extend for another ten-year period our Renaissance Zone, our present Renaissance Zone that we had had active in Hazen since two oh three. I was in, in front of the commission five years ago to get an extension at that time for another five-year period. And that extension will be running out. And subsequently, because of some new legislation that just went into effect just a couple days ago, we can now extend our Renaissance plan for ten years as opposed to five. In essence, then kind of cutting back on some of the paperwork, because it's a pretty involved process to, uh, to make the appeal to get an extension, okay? So, uh, and, uh, a couple of the things that are necessary for the extension to happen. And one is that we do need to get approval from the local public school district, that they are in favor of the extension. And then also, we do need to get approval from the county commission, that they are also in favor of the extension. And part of that, of course, is, is that part of the Renaissance Zone benefits are that there are tax abatements that, uh, particular parties could be eligible for. And, uh, so, as I mentioned, we've been in, uh, we've had a plan since two oh three. And, uh, uh, you know, since that time, I did some tracking, and I believe I put some information forward, used some information. And, uh, since that time, the property values of those folks that have taken advantage of the, uh, Renaissance Zone, the property value in Hazen has increased at over a million and a half dollars. So, so long-term, uh, that's what we would be looking at in terms of, you know, uh, the, uh, with the approval. Now, the other final caveat is this, so, uh, you make a motion to approve, uh, the extension for ten years. Uh, my last step in the process then is to, I do need to get approval from the city commission, uh, which I'm hoping to have happen on Monday night also then for the final document, the final approval. Because they are actually the, um, agency then that, uh, would make final approval on the type of abatements that would occur in, in the future. My Renaissance Board makes recommendations. We have to take all those recommendations to the city commission for final approval. Questions?
So it's just a, we're just kind of like a secondary agency that the state wants basically approval from?
Yep, right, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And part of it is because of the, of the property tax abatements.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep. That's the, that's the tie-in to the county and also the school district. So, but yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Buster? If not, is there a motion to approve the, or approve the extension for the Renaissance Zone in Hazen? Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion?
One, one last thing would be then, uh, I eventually will need a letter of such, uh, indicating approval, and then also a draft copy of the minutes from the meeting.
Okay, so you need a letter and minutes?
Yep.
In the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote nay. That motion passes. Thanks, Buster.
Thank you, Buster.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to planning and zoning, Cindy?
Uh, zoning case twenty-three oh seven oh one is a application for a conditional use permit for a self, thirty, three hundred and five-foot self-supported lattice communication tower in the northwest quarter of section eleven, township one forty-two eighty-eight. It is on, um, Jim and Darlene Swinson's land. And Mike P, oh, Mike P and Z, um, recommended approval on July twentieth. And Mike had asked me to look up if there's a certain time that they have to build it, and there isn't in the ordinance, but they want to build it right away anyway, so...
Okay.
Um, and Mike, if you have any questions?
There's no, um, uh, limit on the, uh, conditional use, like, there's no renewal or anything on that? Okay.
It's not an annual.
It's not an annual? Okay. And, any, any comments?
Uh, just, uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Beaneck, I'm with a company called LCC Telecom Services. We're located at one zero seven hundred West Higgins Road, Suite two forty in Rosemont, Illinois. Uh, we represent Vertical Bridge. Um, as Miss Suger had mentioned, uh, we are proposing to do a three hundred and five-foot self-support tower with a ten-foot lightning rod on top. Uh, the initial carrier is going to be T-Mobile for this site. Uh, Vertical Bridge is in the industry to lease out space on their towers, so if other carriers do come along, they would certainly be, um, not only welcome, but encouraged to go on the tower. We will be located within a hundred-foot by hundred-foot lease parcel. There will be a thirty-foot wide access and utility easement that will run back to the tower. Within that, uh, easement, we would have a, uh, power and the, the fiber running back to the tower along with a twelve-foot wide gravel access road that would service the tower. Um, we are placing the, the tower on the west portion of the property. Uh, the east portion of the property does not have any power or fiber. Plus, there is some wet, uh, quite a bit of wetlands as you work your way to the east on the property. Mr. Swenson spoke with the neighbor, there's one neighbor other than family members that are in that area, and they were okay with the tower's location, so that's basically what we're looking at. It's about two hundred and forty-seven feet to the east of the property line and about two hundred and fifty feet to the, the south as well. Um, it also was placed there at, um, Mr. Swenson's son, who, uh, operates the property with the fields. And this was the optimal location for him to get his equipment around it. So that's why, that's how we came to the location. We did, uh, an engineering study on the tower. We have a fall zone letter that was put in the application. Um, basically, towers do not do this, they, they do this, they bend onto themselves. And that's essentially, they're not designed to fail, but they're designed in the event of a failure. They have like a weaker point and, and it collapses onto itself. And that's, that's the basis of the fall zone letter. We definitely, T-Mobile definitely has a need for coverage in this area, it's along the highway. And so, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So if you had any other service providers, does that affect the ta, tower's integrity at all or anything?
Well, what happens is, say for example, Acne, uh, Communications came over, and they said they want to go on this tower after it's built. What happens is, they run a, a structural analysis of that tower based on the equipment that's going to be going on it. So every carrier that comes along, they'll do another structural analysis to make sure. But these towers are designed for multiple carriers. Three hundred and five feet, that's, we're talking five to six carriers. And it, it depends on the type of equipment that goes up on these towers. You know, you, you could have a whip antenna, which really does not anything to the structural integrity at all versus a carrier or, you know, some other type of services. So it just depends if they go along.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, where, I missed the very beginning, where was...
It's on Jim and Darlene Swinson's, about eight, is it eight miles south of...
It's at the handle.
South of Cuba.
You know where Mike Turner is?
Yep.
It is, it's at the southeast corner of Nineteenth Street southwest and Sixty-second Avenue southwest. It's southeast corner.
About two miles north.
Two miles north of me and by the west.
Okay.
From Mike Turner.
And the typical coverage radius for a cell tower of this nature is about three to six miles. And, and basically, the reason, it's, it's kind of like a rubber band when you look at the coverage, because what happens is, it'll get to six miles when it's not being heavily used. But if it's, you know, there's a lot of traffic, kids are getting out of school, they've got to do their homework, and they're, they're doing a lot of chatting and whatnot, it will shrink the coverage area a little bit. But, uh, typically, it's, it's close to six-mile radius for this, this type of a tower.
Any other questions?
Chairman?
Yep.
May I address the board?
Sure.
One question regarding the store, whether we, more communication we have, and better off we're able to do it. A question regarding the dollar, whether we, more communication we have, and better off we're able to do. What I wanted to ask the board is, is there, in this contract, are there any demolition plans? Because we have put up other towers down the road when this thing becomes non-use? And under any groundskeeping guidelines? We as a board, and when I was on planning and zoning, had that in the contracts, and this for dollars. I'm just curious, if this, any of this information is in disagreement?
I have the same conditions on this one that we did our last one.
Yeah, applicant will be responsible for maintenance improvements adjacent section line. Applicant must contact highway department to ensure compliance. Applicant will reclaim subject property as described in paragraph six of the option for easement agreement executed between applicant and landlords of subject property. So, I think that covers what we've had in other ones.
One thing that we had in the other, that if it becomes non-use, that you have to demolish it down to a depth of at least four or six feet, remove the concrete to that, is that in this contract?
No. But planning and zoning didn't?
Didn't make that recommendation, but, I mean, we can, we can throw that in here if we, if we desire.
Yeah, if, if that's something that the, the county is interested in, you can certainly make that a condition, that if the tower, typically, it's a year, within a year, it, you know, there's no more carriers on it, the tower shall be removed. And, and the typical for removal is about three feet below grade and return to existing condition. I mean, that's certainly something you could put in as a condition.
Yes? I would approve that in the end of the contract.
Okay.
That would suggest.
Suggest, yep. Okay. How would the commission like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with added amendments with three foot and...
Well, somebody has to word it, because I have to go type, retype it, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the vertical bridge as a P and Z requested with an addition of the, help me, Marv, with the three foot and after one year.
That upon non-use for a period of one year, that the ground will be...
Re-claimed.
...replaced to existing conditions to a depth of at least keeping.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, Chairman, you got that?
Well, we got the reclamation.
Got it. Okay.
What more reclamation be?
We reclaimed it with three feet below the surface and then to existing conditions. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
You know, I was going to add to that for, I talked with Trent on this also, and everybody, he mentioned Hodgman's, being the neighbors, that they're the ones have to look at it, and it's right in their front yard, and they had no problem with it. And as we stated earlier, that Trent also, you know, with the, he was happy with where the tower is situated. And the other thing, that it's far enough back that I don't see, foresee a big issue with snow removal, and that's on the road, so I just thought I could add that with that, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
Maybe that needs to be added to all further structures for P and Z.
Yeah, that'd be something to remind P and Z as these come in.
I'll just put it on there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seen none? Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marvin.
Yep. Cindy?
Uh, the next thing is, I didn't put the Vanguard appraisal thing on.
That's where I stuck it, because I, I know they wanted you here, but we had...
Yeah, so I don't know, I didn't put it on, on the agenda.
It was just for the approval, and you got it, Travis, right there in your hand.
Yep.
So, I don't know if you want to talk about it now or by budget time later.
Well...
I mean, we could talk about it now. So, I, I know there was some questions on the billing of it.
Yeah, and I forwarded you his answer, and it really didn't, it's still clear as mud, so.
Right.
It doesn't look like we have to start making payments until they start working, but it won't be long until they start working, so.
Yeah, and basically, the payment would be at the time, or how much ever work they had gotten.
Right.
Through at that point, so it's not like an equal monthly amount, it's not a...
Yeah, it's not a set amount.
Probated, it's not a set amount. We have a budget for it, so I don't know if we want to approve. I think we probably want to approve our budget.
We don't have a budget for it, but it's on...
It's on the preliminary.
But yes.
So, I, I think we should probably wait until we've gotten it on the budget, unless anybody disagrees.
Well, I just had a question about it. So, is this, these amounts that we have, Cindy, is that every year we would incur those? Or is that just like a startup?
No, this is just for, this is just for them to do the two cities.
To get them into the program, right?
Right, and we do have yearly fees that we pay, but that's, that's separate. I suppose our yearly fees will go up too, but...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. We're going to get hit with this every year, aren't we?
No, you're not.
Okay.
That's why I'm going to go out and do all the assessing, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
No.
And if we did do it, then the whole county would be on the same system.
Right.
We wouldn't have two systems, we wouldn't, everything that goes with it, Cindy. It's hard for me to explain, but it's, it's...
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
So, this is something that you're going to discuss whether or not to include in the 20...
In the budget.
Correct. And if we included it in the budget, then I think that would be the time that we would approve the contract.
That's what I feel we should do.
I think the key thing is, it's going to make across the county, right, Cindy, fair and equitable.
Fair and equitable, which is what I'm supposed to do.
Because that's the tough part, is...
Right.
And we're not doing that at this time, because they're not all done the same.
And then it would make it easier for us to back out mill amounts and various other, I mean, it, it's not just the assessing, it helps budgeting, it helps a lot of situations, so it's... I think it's something we should do, but I think we should, yeah. But I just think we should have it in the budget before we approve it.
Right.
Right.
But we'll, we'll keep it on...
Okay.
On our radar. And... Are you still doing the budget this afternoon, or? I'm, I think we'll, we'll talk about it, but I, I think we're probably going to have to have another meeting as far as the budget goes, so. Thanks, Cindy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
Maybe we should try to just put it on next agenda or the agenda after?
No, because you have to put it in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, let's leave it at that.
Just so it doesn't get lost in...
Right, keep coming up.
Yes.
Okay.
It needs to go in the budget.
Go, yes, go up the budget.
Okay, we have the highway department, but we've got a couple of things that I don't know are necessarily for Ken and Charlie, but Wes Morland, mine update, Dave and your crew?
You bet, thank you.
Come on up. I'm sure everybody is anxious to hear what you guys have planned. Please do.
Sounds great.
We've got a, we've got a larger map.
Okay.
Maybe we can just read out for these smaller ones, or?
Amanda White?
Yep.
That's right.
You need to know her secret.
Thank you.
And if he asks Pat Sajak, he said he never worked a day in his life.
Yeah, if you, good morning, everybody. Commissioners, thanks for listening to us today. I think this is more of an informational meeting, we haven't talked here in a while. I just wanted to give you a little history of where our property is at. Right now, we're in full reclamation mode at the Buell Mine. We have about two years of hard reclamation land, putting tops oil down, et cetera. This is a time where we begin to plan for county roads when we're done mining, what we need at the end of the day. We still have, once reclamation's complete, it's seeded, we still have a 10-year period that we have to monitor before we can give the land back to the original owners. But at this point, is when we start planning for roads in the future. So, we've been working with Kim, and we've been working with the adjacent landowners to come up with a plan that appeases everybody. Now is the time to make that plan that fits for all. And we just wanted to show you some ideas we have out there, and maybe ask for your help, and if there's anything to do for next steps regarding this. Do you mind if I step in front of the podium?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, right now, if you look on your map, you have, this would be, sorry, 30, excuse me, 65th Street West, the roads all come up, right next to the Kittle Creek Mine, come up and around, and then towards that. What we'd like to do is keep that road as a permanent road and not build the road through the middle of our property, which would come right here, it's the old 15th Street West. So, it's, it's a road that's in good shape. The adjacent, the landowners, the dinner permits, would like access, and essentially are okay with us not having that road. It's serving everyone well, right now it's working. So, that's, that's kind of what we're thinking at this point. We will have to upgrade access points around our properties that can get into it to the land. That's something that you just pour down, and it's so they can get in.
Are we talking about Old County 12, is that what? If I'm not missing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Old County 12.
Yeah, you don't want to put that back in?
Correct. Right now, we've got a road in place that serves the county, the residents of the mine, everybody is working.
The problem with the mine, the road down the, on the west end of that, that's not owned by the county on that road, on the west end of it, there's an easement. We don't own that. Ken, Ken, you've visited with Xana on this, and we were looking at, according to the records that you got, we were, we were to put county road toll back? Pardon?
It's up to the commissioner.
Is it up to the commission? Do we run into some PSC regulations here?
So...
She's the one that's recommended the 12 back with the PSC.
Yeah, so, we've tried to ensure that everyone that owns our property can get to the land. But we'll have to present their revision to them. And like I said, we're in the early stages of this, present them, the commission, a plan of how everyone's going to access their property at the end of the day.
We talked to several of them there, there was about five or six of them right there. The majority of the area people wanted. I would say quite a few wanted the 12 back the way it was. There was a handful that didn't because of personal reasons.
Yeah, so we've, we've talked to everyone who owns property within our permanent area, and Dave has spoken directly to them, and they do not want it back.
By funding factor, there's, there's definitely one party that wants it, others don't want it, you know, it's a little bit...
I know there was like, I know Ron Dunch requested he like to see 12 back. Ken Riker would like to see it back, and...
So...
I do know that on the west end, I was talking to Lyle, that, and Casey Voight, they own the property on that, we don't. If something happens 20 years from now, we have no road, and Westmoreland's gone. And it's on our dime at that point.
Yeah, so we've, we've got some easement booked to do there, of course, sure.
Yeah.
Like I said, kind of an information, and maybe this is where we're at.
Yeah, we, I mean, that's all it was, was information at that point, too.
So, County 25, that's the paved one, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And just for lack of a better term, Old County 12, anything that's on the section lines, you'll still have section line roads, they just won't be county standard roads. So, there'll still be access, it just won't be a county road section, so to speak, unless we, we request it. And like I said, it's kind of informational, but maybe it wouldn't hurt to have something from each landowner in the area, what they choose, and then that would kind of help us make a new decision.
What we can come back to, just like...
Just informational, yeah.
We can come back to it all with some, some better PSC certification from Xana.
Yeah, I definitely...
From the landowners, have their package together, move along with what we're, what we're thinking.
On, on the east side, there was some question, too, on the east side of Highway 49. And they, you know, the old, by the Rose Hill Cemetery there?
Yeah.
You know, there's some, the producers and landowners in there that had asked about, too, was not wanting, you know, county roads in there, but wanting access roads back in there. I mean, so at least they could move their hay out of there, or their, you know, crops and stuff that places there's not even hay road at this point. I don't know what your plans are.
Yeah, so, so what we've done, we actually worked with the county on the south end, have a crossing through the road spot. So, we've put a colder crossing so they can access property better. So, that part's still, we're still working on the north end, reclaiming that area. At that point, we'll have to have access from the north area, and make sure they can get in there. And I think that, is it a mile, Mercer County?
Yeah.
Off of 49, that access is pretty good so far. So, just once we're done reclaiming, we'll work on that, make sure they have access from that side. Everyone seems happy with what we've done so far, that the crossing we built's got some nice cold roots, and they can get through if it's wet, which that area typically gets, so.
What's the, what's the age of the aerial on the background? Any idea?
I would say that's 2021 area.
Okay.
So, we're, we're coming on that, I think we just wanted to share with you what we're at, and talked to you a while. But we're getting, we're getting down to the end, and it's time to...
Time to make decisions?
Yeah.
And for my part, I just want to make sure about the clarity with the PSC, if we can even, because I do know mining and PSC run hand in hand. And if we would even have the so-called authority to make road changes. Because when you, when you start mining, you do have to go through the PSC for these permits. And then they have guidelines that mining has to follow.
Yeah, like, like we've seen on the east side, you make a plan when you first start, but at the end of the day, you go back and talk to everyone again, do something with Pittsburgh, but... The county, the landowners, just make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, I understand modifications can be made later on, but what I'm getting at is that we can't, so to speak, supersede something that isn't agreed to between the landowners, PSC, and the mine, is what I'm kind of getting at, okay?
Jean wants to be involved, but he doesn't want to overstep.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Kind of. And I don't disagree.
I'll do, we'll do our part, put it that way, but we just want to make sure we're not stepping on, going in an area where it's highly advised, we don't, so.
I think more than anything, we're here just to let you know, quick, talk to you a while, so.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for that update.
Okay, good.
What do you think, another two or two months, maybe get on the fall agenda or something like that? Can't let us have, or anything?
It may take a little longer than that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is something that's not going to happen tomorrow anyways.
No.
We're talking. Yeah.
Just want to just have a plan, and probably on the same page before we sort of finish reclaiming it, you know, taking our points and pitches and that last step you do, like, working with the other property.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep?
Thank you.
Thanks for the map. All right, next up, we got Summit Carbon Solutions, Jay Volk. Jay, Amanda, you covering for him, I don't see Jay.
Do we have any paperwork on that?
Okay.
I didn't get it.
Good morning.
Morning.
Amanda Ober, Summit Carbon Solutions. Today on the agenda, we have approach permit for the BK Fisher pad that was submitted to Ken Miller previously in June. With that, we've submitted the improvements to 62nd Avenue Southwest, as well as improvements to 21st Street Southwest.
Amanda, did you send it to Jay Volk for them?
I sent it to Ken, yes. Well, they don't have it, do you see it there?
Yeah, we have, I don't have nothing in front of me, so I don't.
What kind of improvements are we going to do from that twenty-first street toward to Leroy's, to that? Do you know what their work to plan is there?
Yes, we can actually start back at the approach and work our way back east towards Highway forty-nine. If that makes logical sense. Um, from the approach permit itself, that'll be a twenty-eight foot wide approach.
From, you're starting outside, hey, I didn't hear, where do you want to start? From, you're starting from the western.
From the BK Fisher pad site.
Pardon?
From the BK Fisher pad site.
Okay.
Yes, um, that'll be a twenty-eight foot wide approach. That'll have a twenty-four foot drive surface, two foot wide shoulders. Uh, that'll be eight to one, uh, four slopes on that approach itself. Um, that approach then will lead up to sixty-second Avenue Southwest. That'll be a twenty-eight foot wide road, two foot wide shoulders on that road with four to one four slopes on that road. That's approximately eighteen, thirteen foot long stretch of road that'll be improved there. Um, the back slopes on sixty-second Avenue Southwest will be a three to one there. At that intersection of sixty-second Avenue Southwest and twenty-first Street Southwest headed east back towards Highway forty-nine, we will be improving approximately twenty-three, um, hundred fifty feet of twenty-first Street Southwest to a twenty-foot wide road. Um, that road will have also then two foot shoulders. With that, you'll have eight foot wide drive lanes on there. You will have four foot or four to one four slopes, minimum two foot drive or two foot ditch bottoms, as well as three to one back slopes on there.
And that's from back to Leroy and Barry's approaches, and that's as far as they're going to have?
That's correct. We will start at the intersection at the top of that hill, head east, and that'll encompass, um, all three of the residential intersections.
Twenty-first Street, the road, the first mile going in, or we're not going to make, do anything with that, or what?
That whole stretch there is one mile. So, um, the approximate three thousand first feet of that coming off of Highway forty-nine was deemed adequate, um, to support the movement of.
That's where I'm at, and I'm not worried, you guys, I can't believe that our road and our, our, uh, engineering that would look at that and see deemed that adequate with that hill in there. I don't blame you, I just can't see how you guys could actually go out there and say that hill is an adequate road for travel. That's beyond me, but that's, I'm not, I'm not questioning your side.
Pardon me, before I speak for, for the county, it was deemed adequate for our needs to support the movement of drilling rigs and our equipment.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I guess I'm just, I went out there and looked at that, and I just believe that the people that, on our end, did not do what our county needed to be done.
Is that within that first?
First half mile.
Half mile.
Three, little over half mile.
Trying to picture the road.
There's a hill in there that is not even, it's dangerous hill, it's very high, there's no ditch. And our engineering and our road superintendent deemed it okay. That's, I have a problem with that, period.
Okay.
And I, it has nothing to do with them, it's on our end.
Let's continue, Amanda.
Amanda, you said that Ken has this, the paperwork on this?
Yes, and if I may, uh, Jay Volk will be joining us. He got caught up with road construction, he intends to be in here any moment, so he does have handouts for you as well.
Okay.
So you will be provided that, and that'll help get that visual for you commissioners, um, to, to reference where we're, where we're at on the map.
I was just looking for the paperwork again, but we don't have anything, sorry.
Yes, yes, the paperwork was previously submitted, um, to the county road department.
Speak of the devil.
That's perfect.
Jay, you're not the devil, but.
You're not the devil, come on up.
Do you have, uh, handouts with you? Okay.
I apologize, I got a little delayed on the road construction.
Totally fine.
So if we have.
Amanda did well explaining it to open. Thank you.
Happy you made it.
We all got stuck by a house on, right?
Fun to be in there.
Yeah.
We got stuck by a house. Great, in front of you, you have a packet demonstrating where we are discussing. The pad is located approximately thirteen and a half miles south of Bula on Highway forty-nine. At that point, twenty-first Street is approximately one mile in, and then BK Fisher is then another quarter mile in. So the, the approach that we have submitted to the county core review and that we are requesting approval of that approach, is located at that BK Fisher pad site itself. In the packet then, you will see the approach designs that were submitted to Ken Miller and reviewed with, with Charlie Hankins as well, um, are in here. If I would direct your attention then to sheet four
Fourth page or, there's small sheet numbers, like eight of thirteen or nine of thirteen?
I think sheet four is right here, it's down at the bottom.
Further, further.
Like second to the back. Patient, we like patient. Sheet four, we get it.
Gotcha.
You are correct.
Sheet four. Yeah. One says construction and then says sheet four in the bottom.
To Commissioner Bowman's question of twenty-first Street Southwest. This is the plan and profile of the improvements to be made for twenty-first Street Southwest. We're looking at the intersection of sixty-second Avenue and twenty-first Southwest. We intend to add a culvert on the southern portion of that intersection, the western and the northern intersection there. This road width of twenty-first Street Southwest, again, will be a twenty-foot, um, wide width with two foot shoulders. That'll allow for an eight-foot wide road, uh, driving lane, the four to one four slopes, uh, the two foot ditch bottoms in this area. We were able to maintain three to one back slopes throughout the entire area of twenty-first Street Southwest. That was important to the landowners when we met with them, that they were able to maintain hay through this entire segment. Also, that was preferred by the county when we, when Jay and I and also, um, Jason Erickson, a member of Summit Carbon Solutions, met with Charlie Hankins, uh, and Ken Miller, that three to one was preferred in this area. So we were able to meet those standards, uh, county standards as well. We will have a minimum four, uh, four inch aggregate surfacing on here, um, through this area. And we will make sure that we convey the water appropriately in through here with prostate drainage in this improvement area. This whole area is covered under the SWIP plan for the BK Fisher plan. Uh, Bar Engineering is currently working on the erosion and sediment control plan for this, um, for this road segment as well. Um, also, then, if I could have you look at sheet five, which would be the next one in your packet. We are proposing then to improve Leroy Fisher. Leroy Fisher is the owner of section fourteen, which is on the north side of this road segment. Uh, we are proposing to improve the existing approach here, there is no culvert. He primarily uses this to access the field. Um, we are widening that to a twenty-four foot wide approach here for him that will have eight to one, uh, four slopes there, as well as, if we were to move to page or sheet six, we are then proposing to widen his existing approach here as well. Uh, we will, uh, widen that to a sixteen-foot wide approach as well as grade the four slopes to an eight to one. Currently, those are approximately a two to one, they're quite steep here for him. We'll lengthen the culvert as well as push that back to the north to allow for greater, um, improved drainage in through here for him. And then if we were to move to sheet seven as well, we are proposing then to also improve the approach on the southern side of the road. That is the approach going to Barry Fisher's driveway. Um, we will straighten that out for him and widen that to a sixteen-foot wide approach that will also have eight to one four slopes here for him. All of this will be reseeded with an NDDOT class two, it's a late seeding mix. Um, and that will also be included in that erosion and sediment control plan, um, being developed currently by Bar Engineering.
Are you doing improvements on twenty-first Street in this area?
Which area are you referencing?
Oh, for instance, on your sheet seven, approach four, you're going to widen that approach?
Yes, I'm sorry, approach four is the approach to Barry Fisher's driveway. That one, yes, will be modified, we'll straighten that out to be more perpendicular to twenty-first Street Southwest as well as, make the, the four slopes to be eight to one. Currently, they're, they are quite steep there, so we'll broaden the approach as well as, um, make the, four slopes a little bit gradual, more gradual there.
But are you going to be doing improvements on twenty-first Street in this area? Just improving the approach?
Nothing, going back to the, uh, um, east, is that what you're asking, back to Highway forty-nine from that one?
In that.
No, east, no, I'm on the opposite side of the road.
East and west of that point.
East of, east of that point, not east of that point, no, sir.
West of that point?
Yes, west of that point, Barry Fisher's, all the way to the intersection of sixty-second Avenue Southwest and twenty-first Street Southwest, yes. That's approximately twenty-three hundred twenty-three fifty feet, um, all the way through.
I did drive out there yesterday and with, with, I went through with Leroy. And you guys did a nice job, I mean, I, it was laid out well. The approaches are in the right spots, the drainage is, and I did, and I looked at what Trent's drainage and stuff that he was happy with, not. Jason talked to him about, you know, not wanting to disturb his property, and he was okay with all that. Leroy made the comment to me yesterday, he tried to, um, do you guys want twenty-four seven access to that? That road, correct, is that?
We will be required to maintain twenty-four seven access by the NDDO.
I mean, what, are you going to do all the snow removal then?
Yes, we will maintain snow removal.
That half mile in or whatever, you're, you're adequate with that?
Yes, we'll need to maintain access to monitor.
That's going to be your biggest problem from what I saw. I mean, what you guys did from Leroy's west, that was, you didn't, it was laid out well.
That is correct.
You know, but, you know, the only, the only thing, thing I would have done different, I thought, is that, that hill there, you know, the, you know, half mile from the highway, and you're going to have, you're going to have issues there.
One, one thing that we will be doing when we are moving in equipment, um, or the drilling rig, is we will be proposing that we use flaggers and one-way traffic in through that area. And one thing that we will have our contractors do is also reduce speeds through that area to maintain visibility and safe travel.
It's a tough hill there.
And we've also been working with, um, NDDOT to, um, place trucks entering ahead signs off of forty-nine, during the duration of construction.
And the hundred and fifty foot easement, that's just a construction easement?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the long-term easement will still be the sixty-six feet?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that was also important when we met with Barry and Leroy, that we construct a road that does not disturb the current fence line. Also, on, if we could look at, I think a really good picture of that, is sheet six. So sheet six really describes this well. You can see their current fence line, Barry on the south, Leroy to the north, where their current fence line is, proposed work is with inside their current fence line. And we were able to achieve that four to one four slope, the three to one back slope, all the requirements by the county, as well as the landowner requirements here of, don't modify my fence, make sure I'm able to hay this. That was important to the landowner and, um, important to the county. So I believe this design meets both, those requirements and, and desires.
Sixty. That's what was my next question, so.
Sixty-second Avenue Southwest, that is, how, am I reading these right? Am I going in the right direction? Is that, uh, going down to the site, your site?
That is correct. Sixty-second Avenue starts at the intersection of twenty-first Street Southwest.
Yes.
And.
How far south?
Approximately eighteen hundred fifteen feet south to the approach to the BK Fisher pad.
You're going to stay in the grassy area there, is that on that side hill, is that what the pad's going to be? This is my question as well. I wouldn't be on your, it would be at the end of your road, I guess, but. I was just visiting with Leroy on it.
The proposed BK Fisher is currently, the proposed BK Fisher pad is currently with inside cropland, in Barry Fisher's cropland, not in pasture land.
Oh, it's in the cropland, Leroy was incorrect on that. So you're a little further south down in the, little, little, uh, level of ground, put it that way.
That is correct.
So in that hill there, is that, that going to be, the way he was discussing, is there, there's a four-foot cut on that hill, or you're?
Approximately four foot, yes, if you look to sheet or page, excuse me, five, in your packet, you will see we will have to remove approximately four to five feet from that hill to achieve at max five percent downslope on that road. With that, sheet or page four demonstrates, uh, the slope of that road, sixty-second Avenue. Uh, we'll be able to take that hilltop then and fill in the road to bring that up to, uh, grade to access that approach.
Section line, you, I mean, that section line will be maintained open, you're correct.
It will be, and that'll be conferred with the twenty-first Street Southwest access to access the pad site.
Trent would need to come, I mean, he would be able to groom cattle up and down that, he had music with you guys on that, so.
That is correct. Trent is the owner of southwest, excuse me, southeast section fifteen. We will need to maintain between sections fourteen and twenty-three and then twenty-two and twenty-three.
So what you need from us is approval on the plan?
On the approach, today we are requesting approval of the approach permit submitted to the county. That was previously submitted in June, yes, I believe you have that, we've submitted the payment or the, the fee for that. We've previously submitted the certificate of liability insurance and the renewal of that at the last planning and zoning to, um, Ms. Zuger. And as well as seeking approval of the improvements to sixty-second Avenue Southwest as well as improvements to twenty-first Street Southwest.
And Ken, you have no concerns like you're, this all sounds good?
Amanda, I thought you were going to talk about this, do you like you?
Sure. Certainly, kind of. One, um, certainly. One, certainly. In front of you, you have a speed reduction request. And one thing that's important to Semi Carbon Solutions, the landowners and the county is providing a safe road. I've heard that from Commissioner Bowman, that we, we ensure safety for our residents, for anybody that uses that road. One thing that we heard with conversations with Leroy Fisher, Leroy, Barry Fisher, was that when we're using this road, that we, that it, that it's safe. One way that we propose to do that is that we ask the commission for your feedback today is that we reduce speeds in this, this line segment or this segment of Twenty First Street Southwest. One proposal would be that we have a speed reduction of thirty-five miles an hour for the existing county road thirty-four. County road thirty-four extends approximately three thousand feet up until just east of Barry Fisher's place, about five hundred feet.
Why would you, why would you need?
I don't think we need speed limit signs for.
On thirty-four?
No.
An unmarked county road has a speed limit of fifty-five miles an hour.
Thirty-four is to the west, east of the highway?
County road thirty-four extends west of Highway Forty-nine approximately thirty-two hundred feet. And at that point, it stops. And then it's Twenty First there to the, to the west.
So thirty-four actually goes, I guess I've never seen the signage of thirty-four in those. That's new to me, put it that way. To the west, or to the west of the highway. I've often wondered why that street is. I was, I thought you were wanting to put it on the east side of it.
Well, just upfront, I'm opposed to the speed limit signs. I even gonna have a proposal to remove a bunch of speed limit signs. So I don't think if there's one, are we looking at one county resident in there that uses, that lives on that road?
Two. Two. And Leroy, two, Leroy Fisher to the north, Barry Fisher to the south.
And two?
And are they wanting this just through construction or always? Did Leroy or Barry say, I guess?
This, this would be a temporary now, but we would also then consider life of project once we get through this initial request, initial construction phase.
No, I don't think we have a need for, because then even our, we'd have to have law enforcement out there.
That was gonna be my next question, is law enforcement having?
In a nutshell, we'd have law enforcement out to regulate the speed of your own people. And Leroy and Barry.
Did you guys discuss that with water in front of our, on Leroy's house? That was all in place then? Keeping the road damp by Leroy's home? Well, that was, he had discussed it, but I don't know if you guys, I don't know where that ended up.
Dust suppression, yes.
Yeah, on, on, by his, around his area there.
Through construction, yes, we will be using dust suppression.
I mean, that's the main course, is very construction, so.
Yep, and then also with the reduction in speed that will keep dust down as well.
I think you could, my own opinion is you could regulate that with your own construction companies that you hire and you could tell them they need to keep their speed down. I don't think we need to have the county enforce a speed limit on a on this, on this road, this short piece of road. It's, it's not like it's gonna be heavily traveled, it's basically gonna be your own construction. So I think you could instruct any of the contractors you hired that they should have their, keep their speed reduced. And then if it becomes a problem, our sheriff can be notified and he can go out there and check it out. But I don't think we need to have our sheriff posting someone out there to watch your, to watch you yourselves. And that, that's the only way I can word it. So the speed limit signs, I'm opposed to those, just upfront.
Well, there's two things that are two, is what, contradictory, what we deemed. You said the road's for fifty-five mile an hour, adequate road, and we deemed it adequate. Now, we're not saying that it's adequate, we need to drive thirty-five, so we're, we're not saying two, same things twice.
Contradicting yourselves. Saying it's not, just what, I'll reiterate what he just said. You're saying it's not adequate for fifty-five, you have the speed limit's fifty-five, which should be built to handle the speed and not, not reduce it to thirty-five, because the road's not, can't handle thirty-five. I would say make up your mind which one you want.
I, I think you're kind of reading into this a little bit. They basically said that the landowners wanted a speed limit of thirty-five to help maintain dust.
Well, you're, you're a half a mile away from the landowner's home where they're, where they're reporting.
Right, but.
So you're not gonna do anything with dust at that point.
Okay. They're just, they're just requesting.
I get when you're.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
So.
Keep moving.
Further in the request was to isolate the speed around either Leroy and Barry Fisher's property to reduce speed just on either side of the place, approximately five hundred feet.
That would seem to be more adequate by his, by his home there, because you got people turning off and on the road there. I mean, that's more reasonable in my opinion.
And that zone would be proposed at twenty-five miles an hour.
You've got, you know.
Can't things only be reduced twenty miles an hour? And that's where the thirty-five mile an hour started at, since it was a fifty-five unmarked.
Oh, Charlie?
One thing to mention on that too, so in my discussions with the engineer, I was working on the design of this project. So the landowners wanted to maintain the right-of-way, what it is now, so for name and, you know, things of that nature. So the, the vertical curve design simply wasn't doable with the higher design speed out there. They would have to, the back slopes would exceed out beyond that right-of-way, that sixty-six would break. So they, in order to tough those in, they had to lower the design speed at twenty-five mile an hours and actually worked. So it's, I guess it's accomplishing a couple things and I felt that that was worth mentioning for your guys' consideration and that request.
So that kind of fits into their engineer's design?
It's correct, yep, yep.
Okay, we got, to me, we got two different things here. We got a speed limit, we've got a road improvement.
Yeah. So how would you like to proceed?
Pardon?
How would you like to proceed?
Well, first I would say we proceed with the the access road request.
Okay.
I'm going to, to approve their request on the road.
For Sixty Second and Twenty First Street?
Correct.
As proposed, okay. Motion by Rick to approve the proposed improvements to Sixty Second Avenue and Twenty First Street as proposed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Second request was speed limit reduction? Is that what I'm understanding?
I make a motion that there be no speed limit reduction signed, posted on this road.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Rick, any discussion?
I guess I just think that my opinion on this, if the road is adequate, we don't need to see speed on the time, other than by Leroy's house, I could see that. If the road is, if the road is inadequate, that we need, then we should address the road.
I just want to clarify your definition of adequate and inadequate.
I'm going by what Mr. Ken Miller said, our road was adequate.
Okay.
That was what my definition of adequate.
But I just wanted to make the statement that based on design criteria, sometimes speed limits are reduced due to line of sight issues and other issues when it comes to the public safety. That's all I was gonna say. Any other discussion?
I would be opposed to reduce speed limit when there's active construction through Barry and Leroy's yards. If that's something that they feel is a concern. But I don't know that it needs to be forever and ever amen.
So your comment would basically, during construction, if they needed to reduce speed limits for the safety of the crews, you're not opposed to that, but as the motion states, it would be the long-term
Right.
of speed reduction on the road as it's.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And I guess I would like to add to your portion about your statement on your safety and if the road is deemed adequate, I didn't deem the road adequate. I'm just saying that if the road is by, by our engineering, it has already been established that it's adequate to their standards.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I didn't establish it.
Yeah, I just made a point on what I consider adequate and when it comes to how a road is designed, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I'm gonna vote.
Or was it Jean?
Jean.
No signs.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'm gonna vote nay, that motion passes. You have approval on the road improvements and denial on the speed limits. But in construction, whatever needs to happen.
I'll just make the recommendation, you talk to your contractors and ask them to keep it down. If an issue comes up, even the landowners or whoever, they can contact the sheriff's department and the sheriff will make recommendations after that and handle the problems. Sorry, Terry.
Anything else?
Yes, may I have a clarification on the roadwood motion of approval of Sixty Second Avenue Southwest and Twenty First Street Southwest? Does that include the approval of the approach to the BK Fisher pad?
It would be as it was presented, so if the approach is within that submitted, then yes.
Yep, everything you presented, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's my understanding.
Yep, that would be my.
My understanding of the two is that you presented.
Appreciate the clarification and one last thing, I see that here over time. I just wanted to give you a brief construction update as well. We were looking at pad construction starting of the BK Fisher pad site approximately September timeframe of this fall. This will be the first pad to be constructed. We will be using Morocco Brothers out of Dickinson to construct this site. There will potentially still be one other site to be constructed this fall in Oliver County. Would that stand for any questions on construction timeline?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, thanks for the packets.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Ken and Charlie, we got it's like a utility permit, excuse me?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
First one is West River Telephone Cooperative Permit Seventeen Fifty-One. It is for underground boring for fiber optic. The location is, oh, probably about a quarter mile south of the crossroads on Forty-seventh Avenue Southwest. To bring service to a Kerwin Lund on the north side of where Gary Byrne lives. So the underground boring on Forty-seventh Avenue Southwest, that north-south road that goes to the cross, well, right to the crossroads.
It's kind of where a lot of that new development's going on.
Mm-hmm.
East there, yep.
Do we have a copy of that permit? Request? Well, that's, I'm just asking if we do, not that I'm digging here and I don't see it. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. It's just a, like a road borer or?
Utilities.
Underground boring.
Underneath that, that road, yep, and then they gotta do their markings on the back slopes.
Make a motion to approve the D O T permit seventeen fifty-one to bore under the road.
Okay, motion by Rick?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jamie to approve the utility permit seventeen fifty-one, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay. Ox Culver Project?
Yep, so pretty much everything's complete out there with the exception of fencing, permanent fencing. So we had, the contractor went past their completion date timeframe, there's liquidated damages. They're essentially being assessed against contractor on the project as a result of that. They're, in our opinion, Interstate Engineering's opinion, there was no hardships encountered on behalf of the contractor. So we fully intended on assessing those liquidated damages against the contractor. So they were made aware of that. They, they then reached out to, to me, to Interstate Engineering requesting a change order on the project for the excavation. Their opinion was that there was not any common excavation on the project, they felt that they encountered muck. I guess we, as your engineer, we disagree with them. The project, every, all the work was done, they never brought it to our attention while they're in the field, while it was going on. We never saw anything that really gave us any indication that there was muck on the project, there was some wet material. Wet material is not muck, there's, there's a difference. So in our opinion, the county should not approve this, they should not pay for it. That is the recommendation we made to Ken and Elroy. We met on site with the contractor and Ken, so we met, we brought the owner out, we brought the contractor out, we met there. They kind of stood by their comment and, and I, I, I just, I simply disagree with the contractor in regard to this. You know, at the end of the day, I'm looking out for, for you guys as our client, I'm not gonna try to I guess, bend the rules, so to speak, when it comes to the specification and their opinion of definition of muck excavation. It's just simply not true, in my opinion. So contractor does have a few options, but before that happens, the county needs to make a decision as to what you guys choose to do, whether you approve or disapprove of this request. What they put together was they asked that they split the amount of excavation on the project in half. Half of it be common X, half of it be muck excavation. The difference in cost on that is nine thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents. That was what was received by email, nothing formal, no formal proposal, because well, they just, they have provided actually, you know, an actual proposal sheet to us, it was just written out in an email. So I brought that today, I can share that with you folks. If you'd like to digest it a little bit more before you actually make a decision, that's certainly fine. We have a little bit of time to make this decision. But know that if you choose to not allow it, the contractor is within their right, D O T federally project to issue a notice of intent following the claim that they disagree with the county and the owner's decision on this matter. If, if the district is greater than ten thousand dollars, which in this case, I guess it is not, they would have been involved with this and making this decision, since it's under that, it's pretty much our involvement. And the engineers, whether the engineer approves it or not, I think you guys are aware of what I said on that. If you choose to elect to allow it and pay the contractor this difference, it would be non-eligible items because of my disagreement with it. I would have to agree with, with, with the contractor on this and we'll afford to be federally eligible or you would receive an eighty-twenty cup share. But I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't agree with. But I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't agree with the, the contractor on this. I don't think that they earned this money, so I'm not gonna approve it. That's my opinion.
Do they have any proof of their said muck?
No.
Oh, they never.
Muck excavation is not allowed for embankment and use in roadway. There's, there's a, there's a grade raise on this project. And um if that was the case, then we need to rip the entire roadway out because none of the materials acceptable according to them. But they're, 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 I think, they're not acknowledging that element of the specification and the, the, the definition of muck. Uh they claimed that they had to dig material out on site, which um there was not a three thousand cubic yard hole anywhere on the site for them to swap material. They did swap some material, but it was not that much. And that was at their own elected decision to do that because they, they were behind, behind. They only had three workers on this project for a very, very long period of time. Their scarefire equipment, we kept accurate logs of that. It ran for three hours, I believe, total on this project to try to dry the material out. They didn't wanna wait to dry the material. It was wet material. The material was fine. It just needed to dry. And they were behind the eight ball, and this is what they elected to do, so. I feel very strongly about this, that I do not believe you guys should be paying them this money. But that's, that's my recommendation. Doesn't mean that's what you have to do.
What was the total of the LDs?
It was uh, it was roughly the same. It was like a, I wanna seventeen hundred dollars a day, so I wanna say it was like ten, it was close to ten grand. I mean, it's almost a sense of.
That, that's what I'm getting at. Essentially, they have LDs and they found a way to make a, make a change order to wash those out.
Remember my career as a contractor came to me after all the work is done claiming something that they just encountered, but so, I'm sorry. I think that's my opinion on it, but.
Okay, so basically, we would have to make a decision whether we accept the change order.
The request for, they're putting in a request regarding item number four common excavation to be split in half and muck excavation paid out. It would be a unit price of nine dollars and eleven cents versus their bid price for common X of three dollars and sixteen cents.
This is a request from the contractor.
Correct.
Request from the contractor.
DOT is okay with the bridge.
DOT is the, the product, the end product and everything?
Yeah, the finished product.
Yeah.
Everyone's okay with it, the contract.
I, I, I'm glad about this stuff because I spoke with the district, uh the district engineer, and he actually agreed with, with me on this matter, so. Um I don't know what else to say to the contractor other than sorry. I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, but as.
Do we have Todd look at it though, or do we?
Certainly, uh, because of the notice of intent claims. I mean, if you really wanna go through this, it's, it the dollar figure involved, to me, is not worth the headache on this for the contractor, but maybe they, I don't know, maybe they will go through with it.
That's a good point, Liza. I mean, I don't think we're under a huge time crunch as far as approving the, the request.
The contractor asked if we had an update form. I told him no. That was last week, so.
Right.
The project is done, road is open.
Correct.
Yeah.
This is all.
This is all up to the.
The only, the only thing waiting on is uh permanent testing to get done, because their subcontractor bailed out on them, so they're scrambling to find a different subcontractor to do it, but yeah.
But maybe we should postpone it to another meeting so that Todd can review it. Um I mean, kinda how Charlie mentioned it too, is if we do approve this, it's not eligible for the federal aid portion of it because he disagrees.
Correct. If I were to agree with this and you guys agree with it, then it would be an eligible cost, but I'm sorry, I don't agree with it.
In other words, it's a hundred percent out of the county's funds if we agree to.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
So, everybody good with postponing it until legal can review?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
I'll just give a quick update on Mercer Twenty Bridge. The bid letting date is set for August eleventh. Uh I don't know what time of the day, probably nine AM or something like that, or maybe four PM or something, but August eleventh is the date, so.
And that's all handled through DOT, so they, they do the opening and then um give you guys the, the bids?
Yeah.
Okay, um the Basin Transload Truck Route, um I got an email, I believe it was Monday, so Basin Transloads on County Twenty west of Beulah and east of Zap. Um County Seventeen is that bridge that has, is it a ten-ton or eleven-ton restriction on it?
Uh I believe it's ten, I believe it's ten, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, regardless, uh an empty semi isn't weighs more than that, so. Basin uh Transload has gotta haul out some oil. Um do we have anybody from Basin, Transload here?
Um I'm not, I don't represent Basin itself. I represent Buckhead Midstream.
Oh, okay. So um, so correct me if I'm wrong, but you've approached the city of Zap? Yeah, please come forward and state your name.
Uh Jerry Geiger from Buckhead Midstream, uh based out of Houston. I live in Dickinson. I'm from just over there originally. Uh we were approached by Basin or I call them global, don't get me confused. And uh we did a project for them up north of uh the Williston area and it, it went pretty well. So they approached us to take on this project. Oh, we're running into the road restrictions and whatnot and I didn't know the bridge failed. I mean, this has all come to light, so uh we, I approached Zap, sat down with them. They come up with a little, I kinda told them what I, what helped them with, you know. They had a, a surcharge on there for barrels coming through town. We limited the speed to ten miles an hour. They want the trucks off the road before eighty degrees, if not sooner. Uh we'll, we'll go to Zap. But with Kennedy's guys, it's uh probably a, a true one oh five thousand pound road. Well, the residents of Zap, a couple of them are concerned because they don't want trucks in town and it, and I get all that, right, so. The problem arises when, when I talk to global people, they just and my people down south initially is, we'll just do sixty-five thousand pounds and a half with everybody, which they can't. The trouble is now we have three hundred and fifty loads instead of a hundred and fifty. So I thought if I could mitigate the loads by getting an increase in the weight somehow permitted or however, however we come up with a plan, we could probably get the load count at half, which even if the trucks are empty, it's gonna save on your road. It's just a no-brainer, so. So we're, we're looking to.
Where are you running into a weight problem?
Either, either direction. Um Zap has, I think it's sixty-five thousand, and then that mile and a half stretch from the airport to forty-nine is sixty-five thousand.
Yep, so and that, and that's fine, right? So it's kind of a global problem. This isn't my problem. But we'd like to purchase dog, but I can't purchase oil and haul eighty barrels alone without offering a lot less money for their oil, which part of me doesn't care in a way with the in order to make this work, we gotta get everybody to come together and to compromise or something. Or if they're gonna basically go sixty-five thousand pounds alone, they can do what they want. They can't really stop.
Well, if we change the road to a hundred and five thousand pound road, that would limit you to seventeen. Well, sixteen on an axle, seventeen on a tandem.
If, basically here, what I've been hearing, this is my.
Were, were you looking at going through Zap or?
We don't, we really don't want to, but we thought we might have to, so I wanted to get Zap on board. At least that was our, our route.
What direction are you going from?
Uh west towards Kildare, up towards Williston. So I, I know there's a seven ton per axle load limit, somewhat on some of your stuff down here. So if we use an eight axle, that, that would actually improve. And then I, I, I thought, what I told everybody is, let's do an eighty or ninety thousand pounds. Don't do a hundred and five. Let's, let's drop the total weight. That would also drop eighty loads off again. We're trying to get the load traffic down. And uh, and I, I think that was pretty doable when everybody was agreeing to that. Zap wanted a three dollar barrel tariff, which honestly, I don't care. I just.
Are you restricted in the city of Zap in weight?
Sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, the city has.
Does the city have it?
The city has it posted at sixty-five.
In a nutshell, there's no way to get this oil out, okay? And we all, and, and whatever, it's the oil business. So my, my concern with, with Buckhead is uh if we buy this oil at a discount and we have to, we have to include extended trucking costs. They have to include a few other things. So we will make a legitimate offer. We haven't made a legitimate offer either until the road situation's cleared out. Because it means eighty barrels versus two hundred barrels, and I'll talk of a huge margin here for us, huge. So uh I just wanna get something from the county that if we don't need to go to Zap, we'll just eliminate that part of the problem.
Thanks, Ash.
But if we're coming out the other way, we need to know what we can haul going back to forty-nine.
Okay.
So if you want uh sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred, five thousand, that, that's fine. I just need to know what, what you guys really have to have.
So he, he can do eight axles?
Well, what I'm, but.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What I'm doing is, I, I wanna make some proposals here and then see how the rest of the commission votes on it, which could probably possibly solve some of your issue.
Or.
That's because we may have discussion here and, cause I'm, I'm proposing that we implement the North Dakota Department of Transportation Weight and Limits on all our roads and remove all our weight limit signs because there's, but that, that's a step later here. So, and you're, which is, I didn't even know you were gonna be at this meeting, so this
No.
It doesn't have, my proposals don't have anything to do with, with what you're having, but it could alleviate some of your issues that you're having right now. That's what I'm getting at. So I don't know where, where we could go proceed with this, because what you're asking for is if you could get a exemption, so to speak, to go to the east of forty-nine. Or pay a overload fee.
Right.
Okay.
Ultimately, in, in in the oil buying world, everything is on a margin, right? So if we stick at sixty-five, we're gonna make an offer. And as, as your weight limit comes up, so does ours. And then, of course, global is happy, you know, of course, but my concern is uh, I am a local myself, so I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna wreck anybody's roads because I gotta live here too, so. So if we could set a limit, whether it's eighty, ninety, a hundred, then we all bid and act accordingly. So whatever you guys, wherever you guys go, uh we, we'll make it work. That's typical of us, you know, the oil business, so. If we can get eighty to, I thought in my head, if we could do ninety thousand, the trucks gotta be held accountable. There, there is no overload. I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't care if the sheriff was there on every load. They need to behave, you know. He also represents, not to represent me, so. So we're looking for just uh what you guys are comfortable with, whether it's sixty-five or a hundred and five. Give me a hundred and forty thousand, hell, you know, we'll get it out of there, but, but uh I just, we just need a number, so we're comfortable to make an actual bid. But we're just gonna walk away. I'm not sticking my neck out there either, so. So uh, but if you guys do understand that we can regulate speed, all our trucks got computers. We know exactly what they're hauling. I know exactly how fast they're going, maybe second, and then just push a button. So we could control a lot. So we just, we're just asking for the, whatever parameters you guys are comfortable with, set that in stone and, and hold everybody accountable. That's what I would do. That way, we all know. We're all on the same page. There's no, wow, you know, he said, he, she said, we have to stop that. I don't like doing this like that, so. Let's just put it in stone and if global wants to have an opinion, then they need to have an opinion. But my opinion is I represent Buckhead or represent global, that if we get a weight limit set, you want it done at a certain time of the day, whatever you guys want, we need that and we just, I think we should have that in stone. And of course, global should have their uh minute in court too, whatever that is, and and just set this, just set a parameter so we can all go forward, or I'm just, I'll just walk away because I have nothing invested here yet. That's, that's all, that's what I'm asking for, so.
Yep.
And I think uh, I, I would say that if you can get the load count down, I would, because even empty truck trucking roads, uh it's less traffic. You know, there's people on that highway, on that road. To me, it's just a win-win to get the load count down. We could still go to Zap. I think they would agree with what the county would recommend to them also. As far as an extra tariff, well, that's, that's a whole never discussion. And there's some reasons I would be for it because the more we haul, the less we pay on, on our side for expense also. So share the love, get everybody on the same page. We'll just get it out of here. Thirty to forty-five days, it's gone, so. There's another company that could represent here, and I'm not saying I represent him either. But there's a couple of options to get the oil purchased and get it out of the country, that you guys are done with the whole thing, so. Or fix the bridge pave the other road next year. You know what I mean? Which is, it's just one of them weird things. It's kind of a little bit of a phenomenon, but and I think it's for you guys, just in your head, just get the information, call me, beat me up, whatever you gotta do to get what you gotta hear. So you're all comfortable. I think it'll be just for, if we're all the same age, so.
Okay. Marv?
Good question. The easy answer is going to Golden Valley option, is going west of the property gardens. Is that a twenty, two hundred bridge or is that a restriction? How much longer would it probably get to? Probably two hundred at Golden Valley, but is that an option?
I believe Golden Valley's got a bridge over.
Yeah, you can't get out of Golden Valley either, right, currently.
Seems like we have a road block. That bridge is what killed everybody, right?
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
So we're kinda road blocked, it doesn't matter how much we try, so.
Okay, Gene?
I was gonna say, I think there's something you said about the reduced truck count too with the ESOS, and you're lowering that, you know, that, that would be something for you guys to consider. I mean, there is positives to it too, but it's not just all negatives with more weight. I mean, logically, you know, well, there's less trucks, it's, it's
Fewer trips. Slower weight, more trucks, doesn't it?
Right, right.
I think it's a perception, if, what I've noticed over the years, the, the truck going forty miles an hour and a truck going twenty temperature, and if the speed limit's forty-five and the truck's going forty-five, it looks like we're going about ninety. It's an illusion. They're, they're, it looks like they're really flying. They're really not. But come from the truck room also, I would say that your speed is what I would limit, like the next row of truck everybody tell. There's a lot of truth to that, so. Get the speeds down, or you're gonna, you know, try to legally, I don't know if you can. If it's forty-five posted, like you were talking before, that, you might be stuck with that too. I don't know, but if, if they're gonna get a permit to haul more, less loads, I'm pretty sure they'd slow down too. If they're my trucks, we're all gonna drive. Whatever speed limit they all want, that's what they need to drive. I would put that in stone. Temperatures, whatever that is, whatever you all want to be comfortable. And Ken knows a lot about roads. We've all been on his road before.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop it just so that the commission can talk.
Yeah, like what Charlie is, like maybe they could talk them into global buying this uh state, uh bridge expansion thing we were talking about. Obviously, we just.
Please hold, just.
Jump right to a motion on that. I won't, well, I don't know if you know what I'm, what I would like to do is um I, I motion that we implement the North Dakota Department of Transportation Wa, weight limits on all our county roads.
And what, can you give us just a little detail on what that implies? Or do you wanna, okay, motion by Gene to implement the North Dakota DOT road?
The North Dakota Department of Transportation Weight Limits on all our county roads.
Okay, motion by Gene. Is there a second?
I'll second because I believe.
Okay, second by Jamie. Okay, discussion. Gene, could you kinda give us a little rundown of what that would entail?
That would entail removing all the load limit signs that we currently have in the county. I have. I have even gone out to the landfill and pulled scale weights. I don't even know where I wanna go with this, because I don't wanna throw people under the bus. But we currently, according to our, uh, road weights that we have right now, our weight limitations on many of our county roads, there isn't a garbage truck going out to the landfill that would even meet our current weights that we have on our county roads. And even with the North Dakota Department of Transportation weight limit guidelines, there would be several of them that would still be overweight. And they've been driving these roads for twenty, thirty years, and our roads are not tore up. In fact, uh, and now just, I drive a county road that, uh, County nine, I'll just put it out there. And north of two hundred, the first half mile to mile of County nine is the roughest part of County nine that there is. There is very little truck traffic on that, but there are approximately ten, uh, non-farm residents on that piece of, on that stretch of road. And so, it's not the trucks that are beating up. In fact, there's a ag producer about three miles north on County nine that doesn't even drive south to two hundred. They go north to twenty-six and go over to twenty-one and then down to two hundred, just to avoid all those residents and so that they don't get, um, hackled by the county for beating up the road. And that road, three miles north, is in perfect shape, and the trucks are not beating it up. So, the, um, weight limits we have right now are, uh, Golden Valley, you can't even get in there with a garbage truck, get in and out with the weight limits that are on the roads accessing the ci- accessing the city. You couldn't even get in there with a garbage truck.
What would the differences be?
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of what my question-
What would the differences be? So, right now, we have such and such weight limit. If we went to this, the, and North Dakota DOT weight limit, what would it change it to?
On a tandem axle truck, it would be seventeen thousand pounds an axle. On a ta- any multiple set of axles of, uh, three or more, it would limit you to sixteen thousand pounds per axle. So, if you're running three-
So, it's more pounds per axle as opposed to?
Total weight.
Total weight, correct?
The, the total weight is also based on your bridge length. So, if, and I know a lot of people go crazy and they say, well, now you're changing it to a hundred and five-five, because that's what the North Dakota, to do a divisible load on a, I gotta use state road now, because county has weight limits, so I'm gonna go with the state roads. To go on a state road to use a divisible load, oil, you cannot, to achieve a hundred and five-five is virtually impossible, because you can't get the bridge length. So, on a sixty-seven foot long trailer, front, center axle on your drives to the center axle on your, for this, uh, rear axle on a sixty-five foot trailer, you're looking at only ninety-three thousand pounds anyway. So, it doesn't matter how many axles you put under, because it's the lesser of the length or the axles. So, I can run, if I'm running, uh, six axles or seven axles on a sixty-seven foot semi-trailer, I'm limited to, it's approximately ninety-three thousand pounds. I'd have to get the chart out and look. So, it doesn't even matter. I can't even get to a hundred and five-five. And to get a trailer that long, they don't make them. You can't even get a trailer long enough. So, the weights, and if you're running a tandem axle, which a majority of your ag producers out there have right now, a tandem axle trailer, eighty thousand pounds, so you can go anyway. Doesn't matter, it, it just plain don't matter, cause you're thirty-four thousand pounds on your tandems on your trailer, thirty-four on your, um, tractor, that's sixty-eight, twelve on your steers, that's eight. And that's all you can go. It doesn't matter how long you are.
And we follow DOT for spring weight restrictions, correct?
Pardon?
Frost laws.
Frost laws.
They have frost, yep. They have frost laws also, where you can't-
Dunn County does not have-
Pardon?
Weight signs, correct? Dunn County?
Dunn?
Dunn.
Yeah, they follow North Dakota.
They follow North Dakota, right, and they have significant-
I will not swear to that, but it is to my best knowledge that they do. They use the North Dakota DOT.
But just to, you said the sixteen thousand, so eight tons per axle in a standard configuration?
On a set of three or more.
On a set of three or more.
Which are gotta be separated by ten feet or more.
Okay.
Anyone who drives truck knows these.
Right. So, if we implemented this, then they could be in that ninety thousand range, or could they?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at, when he, when he was asking for the request, if we were to okay this.
Okay.
Which is, it, it's not gonna change our roads at all. It's not gonna beat them up anymore.
But then we'd also have to notify load paths of the change as well?
Yes, but that's another area we need to get to. There, there's, there's a few changes we, we need to make on our county roads. This is just one of them.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on adopting the North Dakota DOT? What's it called, road?
It's, uh, the North Dakota Department of Transportation weight limits.
Okay.
And this has nothing to do with our bridges? Cause our bridges have to have their own, right?
Right, if the bridges limit you to-
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm not talking the bridge.
Right, I just wanna make sure that's clear, that everybody knows this is-
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. We, weight, weight limits on bridges stay, they're, they're, that's separate. Just cause you change a road from sixty-five thousand to eighty thousand, and if there's a ten, I gotta make sure I say this right, a ten-ton bridge in there, that's still a ten-ton bridge, they don't change that.
I just wanted to make sure the community was aware of what that means, that those do not adjust.
But it's, it's, right now, it's, uh, yeah, it, the, the weight limits are, if we ask our sheriff's department to go out and start scaling every truck, I guarantee you, it would, the ticketing would not be your ag producers. Which a lot of people think it's your ag producer, it's, it's not.
Okay, any other discussion?
Can I ask for Ken to put, does he have any input on it?
Sure.
Do you have any input on it?
I'm not against, dude, the only question I have, Gene, though, is, uh, like, like eighteen oh six is that eighty thousand?
That's a state road.
Right.
Or, or a federal road.
No, it's a state.
Okay.
You know, it's taken out of Dicken, but my question is, is, so, if we go, like, that's a seven-ton per axle road, but with a one oh five-five max. But you have the axles. If you have the axles, you can go up to that one oh five-five. But what you're saying is you wanna go to every road in Mercer County to go to that eight-ton per axle? Are you going like the seven-ton like the, cause like I say, eighteen oh six is seven-ton. And that's what we have, like on our eight, we only have eighty thousand pound rows. I'm not against going, if, as long as you got the axles, as long as you're at that seven-ton per axle, to go up to one oh five-five, I'm, I don't have a problem with that. But like I say, not every road is in Mercer County and, or the state, like I said, eighteen oh six is one of them, that is that seven-ton per axle. Like I say, I'm not against doing that, the DOT thing, but I think in putting that, our seven-ton up to, from eighty thousand up to one oh five-five, as long as you have the axles in your, in that, at that seven-ton, cause that's, I mean, eight, like I said, eighteen oh six is just one example of a state road. Cause not one, not all of them are, like forty-nine is that eight-ton, and two-hundred is, and it's more likely the thickness of that pavement.
Forty-nine is?
Forty-nine is eight, one oh five-five.
Is eight and a half ton per axle.
It could be, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent-
It's a one oh five road.
Like I say, not every one of their roads are all the same either, you know, they're either a seven, or eight, or eight and a half, you know?
They have very few roads that are less than eight and a half ton per axle, and they are on the, on the site. When I go to the site to see what I can run down the road, I think there's two roads in the state. Not during frost, the frost restrictions, during normal road. And I don't know why, why those would be, but they're not even close to where I drive, so I don't need to know.
Marv, did you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, the board, I can ask you guys a question. Is this motion even on the agenda? And is it germane to the question as before the board? Seems like a given subject.
It doesn't need to be on the agenda. It's not a, um, I don't know how to say this, it's-
It's not germane to the question as being presented to the board. Answer the question and read the motion.
Well, I guess I had it on the agenda for the truck route, and the truck route would have been for an axle limit was, was what I had on the agenda. Um, as far as Gene's motion, it wasn't specific to the agenda, but it does come underneath-
Under the road department, yeah.
I don't see how it wouldn't be viable.
Yeah, I don't.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm, no, that's a good question. Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
No, I gotta clarify me again now. All our roads, you wanna, if, if we're following N-DOT standards, we are gonna be following what Ken said too, depending on the roads.
Correct. So, whatever covers N-DOT, North Dakota Department of Transportation, like he mentioned eighteen oh six, if that has a seven-ton limit, we can't supersede that.
No.
And we're not saying that we would.
That's what I'm saying, do we, we, uh, do we still go back, is there some seven-ton limits rules that we have or not?
No.
That's what I wanted to clear.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. That should suffice for what they plan to do, as long as they're following the DOT rules, whatever direction you go, if you go through Zap, the city would have jurisdiction over their road.
And I, I guess, you said it.
Okay.
Okay. The city still regulate their streets and roads.
Yep.
Well, we would if we don't have that in charge.
Okay. Ken, Charlie, anything else?
I think I can take that.
Okay. Chip?
We need a break.
Break, yeah. We're gonna take a five-minute recess here.
The weather service is, I mean, they're obviously, I watched this, there were, in front of us, it was beside, but anyway, uh, from what I could tell, and what came into the lake, that's what I watched, and, you know, where the, uh, the view lines made, and then, you know, the azaleas. That was great kind of building here, so I watched that, I was watching the room, the rotation, just to recognize there was some, that, that certainly had the ability that any given time about. But it had, we have a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty-dollar trees covered, but it's, so, that has to be the highest they can. And rain event for that tree, a hundred years, it, it's going on, but it's a big event, it kind of a problem.
It was, it was the first game I worked on the agenda of the, it came so fast.
Well, you know, we were three games in directions, and the mess in the lake, and all the, that tournament, it happened with all the cameras.
Well, she's got it. She wants it.
I don't know why people want to go there in the summer. I don't get that. I do, I do what I know.
She wants it.
I just thought. Basically, we can set it out. At least they would decide.
You told me.
Give them a chance to...
This is...
That's what I'm trying to do. But, give them that word.
I asked for a pass. I agree with all fans, which you know that on a plan.
Yeah, it's possible. Well, we were, my idea was that we have confirmed.
Very true. Very true. Nope. No, because I... It was right there.
Ready to continue?
Here, it's in five minutes. You gave her five minutes.
We recessed at exactly eleven twenty-one.
We might.
I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, he will.
I think it's just a standard.
Me? Oh, Rick. Yes, you said five minutes.
I said five.
There's been five. We can reconvene.
Okay.
But you're term.
But we have a, we have a court.
I just want to make sure.
I said five minutes.
Yep. And I was just making sure, got to ask Carmen when did we recess, was it eleven twenty-one?
Travis, she had to make changes on this, so you could be silent.
Okay. Are we on pause? I'd like to get going again.
No.
Okay. All right. I'll call the meeting back to order here. We still have a quorum up here. Eleven twenty-seven. Well, next on the agenda, we have the landfill. Motion to deposit fines and metal sale revenues into the operational fund. Candy?
Okay, I guess I'm back to request that that money, that fifty-two thousand dollar filter socks gets moved into an operational account. And then from here on in future, when the steel gets baled and the stuff I take to business, instead of that going back in there, it'll go into that operational fund instead.
Okay, and that just, it'll all stay within the landfill account, but it'll be in the operational?
Just in a different account from where it's going now. It's just going in where the money turns.
Right.
And I'm not opposed to it, but it doesn't violate anything, does it? We can...
We can do that because it's collected through the landfill and, yeah.
Yeah, we understand. I just want to make sure.
Or somebody to move it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at Candy is we could approve it, but if there's some state statute restriction, we can't supersede that. And that's all I was asking, to make sure that we're not trying to supersede something. I'm not opposed to it at all.
I don't think we are.
This has kind of been my biggest question because they are their own entity, but yet they're county employees, but yet they have their own budget. So then I was like, I don't... When we were talking yesterday, I'm like, I'm not sure why you shouldn't get back what you sold because you are, you are self-sustainable, you are yourself. And so that kind of led into...
And I think it's just good practice that we make the motion and then obviously goes forward that way.
It's frustrating, I think, on...
Right.
So I motion, oh, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
I motion to deposit fines?
Yeah.
Oh, I understand now. Deposit fines and metal sale revenues into the operational landfill fund account.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Gene, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? So...
Do we need to do this each time for her? Is this something that now we'll send the press?
No, she can do it.
That she can have it?
Until we, yes, every time we sell.
They'll just give me a different number because I write down a number when I turn that money in. And then they'll just have to give me a different number that'll give them to put that in that account.
Yeah.
Correct.
That'll be the only thing.
Yep, and you can do it from this date forward until it's changed by the commission.
Okay.
Dawn, any issues for you?
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Capping project?
With that, I guess I would like to get permission to get ahold of Sherwin, Houston Engineering, to come and look at the capping project to see how much we actually have to cap to be compliant. And then get the numbers ready for it. So we can put this out for the spring of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and we actually had budgeted money for capping projects, so
Yeah.
we can go forward.
We can use that to pay for Sherwin's time this year. To get started on it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve a landfill to...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Jamie to seek the engineering help for a capping project at the landfills, or second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none? Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. And then I think we had a wage request on the agenda for landfill?
Yeah, I was actually wondering how a person would ever go about, being that we are Mercer County employees, I've been there, I've been speaking for it, that we are Mercer County employees, that what, does it have, like if we were to get a levy or a mill or whatever that is, because I don't even know what that is? Does it have to go, like on a boat? Like the public's got a boat on it to allow us to have part of one, just to pay like for our wages?
That's a good question.
Because we are employees of Mercer County.
So that was the biggest thing when we were in budget discussion is that obviously salaries are a big part of people's budgets, but that would, that takes up a decent chunk of her amount of money and for her being self-sustainable, without having to seek other means, so...
And the other part is I can't compete with everybody else's wages because everybody else gets like taxed dollar money or whatever, gets a levy on their stuff, so their wages are way higher. I mean, the highway department could pay way more money than I can, technically.
Do you know of any other, like facilities, like I know Burley has their own and stuff. Do they have a specific mill levy set aside there just for that?
I guess I would have to call and ask that.
No.
Because I think that's what, maybe where we need to start on this, is to ask some of the ones that currently operate if they have a specific mill levy assigned to just their department? And then to find out how they got that.
No levies are state.
Can we do?
State authorized no levies.
Yeah.
There are no county, no one.
And can we even, could we even do a mill levy for an enterprise?
I don't think we can, but it'd be worth the question.
I know, I understand.
What you could do, and what we've done in the past, is if you got, if you are short, okay, and it's not doing enough money to pay, then the county in the past would loan money to you or help supplement.
But then you gotta pay it back at two percent interest and that, you're losing money. That's not...
Two percent. Yeah, this is...
I know, I know that's true, but still, that isn't, that isn't, you can't run, you're running a business in a hole that way. I don't agree with that.
But county...
We're just gonna have to keep our wages down, but then to get help, it's, it's tough to get people for what we're paying.
But what I'm saying is the county would help supplement.
Okay.
We had too many conversations.
For review. I, we understand your your issue, your problems. But what we, as a commissioner, are gonna have to look into is if, we, we may have to even charge more for, for garbage. So we would need to look into what other landfills are currently charging. But because we accept trash, is what do we call it, trash or garbage? From anybody, it'll be hard to levy the Mercer County residents for over expenses at the landfill when we, when, I can come from Dunn County, Oliver County, McLean County and put garbage in there. So if the expenses are getting, I, I understand. So if the expenses are getting too high, I have a problem taxing Mercer County residents to cover those costs for people out of county bringing garbage to our county. So...
But the little bit that I'm asking for is actually for one of your supervisors, it's probably twenty thousand dollars less or more for, to pay for three people. Then, I mean, so it isn't, it isn't like catastrophic.
And maybe mill and levy wasn't the way to work.
Little piece of a mill.
A way to find a...
And it's not to use, I mean, nothing like that, but let me, let me call, see if I can get some more information on where they, how they do there.
I would appreciate that, Candy. Yeah.
I can help you out.
Yeah, I don't think we're opposed to it. We just gotta make sure we don't do anything illegal.
We gotta do it right.
I miss some part of it, but it's like if we get more information on this and this gets built into the budget going forward, or do we need to do something?
That's kind of where this came from, is that we are in budget talk and...
It might be something we have to incorporate in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for...
Thanks.
Anything else, Candy? That's, do we have anything else?
I don't think so. I think that's all.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you, Candy.
All right, Sheriff, N-D-Pers safety retirement plan.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I guess if, if I could, I'd like to do the coroner.
Sure.
And the medical director first. I, at your request, I did a little bit of research and just to let you know what other counties are doing. Oregon County pays for their coroner a hundred dollars a day. Regardless if the coroner's used or not, of course, they're bigger, they have more, you know, reason for a coroner. But that's thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars a year. That's not touching on their medical director, I mean, for their, for their jailing services. McLean County pays a funeral home to be their coroner, a couple people on that, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for the coroner services. You know, for their medical director, they put a doctor on retainer at twelve thousand dollars or in that near amount. And then when they use him, it's eighty dollars an hour or more. So they do two things to cover their coroner, the medical director. And with, by doing that, their jail nurse then works under the license, which Jamie has to work under a doctor's license somewhere also, works under the license of that doctor. So that's, in McKenzie County, they just have a full-time correctional medical coordinator. And that's at a pay raise, they call it a scale six, and that's thirty-seven, thirty-six dollars an hour, full-time job there. So what, I, I, I talked to our current coroner and way back when in the past, when Doc Earring was our coroner, he made an agreement to be on a retainer, to be our coroner for two hundred dollars a month. That was just a retainer. He was supposed to bill our county, which he never did because he, he, you know, he volunteered his services. He never sent us a bill. So that's how we came to the two hundred dollars a month while we were paying Dr. Tom, our Casper now. He can't obviously do that anymore. He's at a stage in his life with legal liability and us taking federal prisoners, stuff like that. And just the liability of being a coroner. You guys asked me to try to come to a contract or an agreement with him. I, I brought the memorandum of understanding to you that he would be willing to do that for us. And he was talking about five hundred dollars a month would cover our coroner needs. And then he'd be our medical director for an additional five hundred dollars a month. And that would fit into what I asked you guys for my preliminary budget and me and Carmen came up with, at twelve thousand dollars a year. He would be responsible for filling that gap if he's on vacation or out of town in, in Mercer County. His assistant, which is kind of unusual, actually works for the sheriff's department too, but she would have to make, and Doc Casper have to make a deal with Oliver County to be their assistant coroner down there. We shouldn't cover their expenses. So they'll have to take that up with Dr. Casper and Jamie. This would cover just Mercer County for our medical director and our coroner needs. And I, I, I wrote into the understanding that we'd be obligated to each other for at least thirty days for, so we had thirty days notice. If he decides he don't want to do it anymore, I can get someone else because that's a legal requirement for our jail. And obviously, the county needs a coroner. And, and vice versa. If, if we find a better deal, which I don't think we're gonna, my recommendation to you guys to, my commission is to get, get this doctor on board for us legally and, and, and an understanding that ties him to us for at least thirty days. So if he leaves, we can get someone else.
So it's, it's five hundred a month and then?
Five hundred a month.
Is there additional for services provided?
No, that's, that's covered.
So it's five hundred for the coroner and five hundred for the medical director. Together, a thousand.
But no individual?
That covers all expenses. Can you see where else are we gonna get a close deal like this?
No, that's, I just, because I didn't see it in here. I was just like, as long as...
So in my opinion, he's still, he's still doing a lot of what he does for community. And we sure appreciate that on my end.
Okay.
So that's what I'm looking for today, is, is do you guys enter into that agreement?
He is not available for the next two weeks. Is it his responsibility to find someone to fill in?
Yes, it's his responsibility to have that arrangement with our assistant coroner, a coroner which is also a nurse. But he would still have to be available, you know, even by phone, a medical director. Jamie operates under his lights period on that end of it. But as our assistant coroner, he has to. Comes on as our assistant coroner. She don't get paid by me anymore. She gets paid by him.
And this is how it's...
We don't fall into any double, yeah, conflict or double jeopardy thing here with you.
I cannot be the direct coroner. I can be the assistant per the century code. Per commissioner and coroner because the coroner is appointed by the commission.
Did Todd look at this at all?
No, I, I have taken that from, actually, it's from Lad Erickson's memorandum
Okay.
of understanding with McLean County, I believe.
I'm just concerned
Yeah.
that how, how would you differentiate acting as assistant and being, and working for the county? Because he'll be paying you while he's gone?
She wouldn't be. She'd have to say, it's legal. I, I, I hear you at that, but she, what she would have to do is make it known that she is now acting as our assistant coroner. Same thing when she changes hats to come over here for the commission. She's no longer my employee.
I just tried to cover you.
So she has to make sure, and that is her responsibility to make them hats not intercoined.
Okay.
Everybody has to make sure she's not the jail nurse, and she's not the county commissioner at that time. She is the assistant coroner. And, and with that being said, you know, the medical examiner for the state of North Dakota still oversees their work and they work closely, the coroner, the assistant coroner with the medical examiner. He's a state.
I'm only asking this too, Jamie, because if questions come up from the public, we gotta have it clear.
I agree.
Gotta, gotta pick on you because you're here.
And can defend yourself.
No, that, that is directly out of the century code. Because the coroner is is appointed by the commission, which is also
So she couldn't be our coroner.
My role as the jail nurse, I can't, I have a boss in the sheriff. Which is why I could serve, there's a person in between, which is why I can serve on this board and be a sheriff's office employee because I have a boss. Same with the coroner. Dr. Casper is my boss.
When you act as coroner, that you're no, not a Mercer County employee at that point.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And then just on the personal, with that being said, there, there's no better pick than you guys to found already is than Dr. Casper for a coroner. He's been, he has the experience, he has the suspicious mindset of just life in general because he's been around long enough. I think he's a perfect coroner.
And if there is discomfort, I mean, this came with my, my job from this, I, but if, if there's differing opinions, then
I can ask Dr. Casper, yes, to locate an assistant. And then we might run the risk too, you know, locate an assistant outside of the sheriff's department in the medical field, but then we run the risk, you know, I'm giving you thirty days to back that up.
I'm not opposed to having Jamie as a assistant. Don't get me wrong. I just want to...
If it does become an issue, we will ask him to work on a, a different assistant, but they have to have specialized training also.
Okay.
Coroners and assistants.
Is this something we need to move on today or work into our, our budget?
Well, I, I think we should have an opinion from Todd before we approve it.
So another item we need to table?
Yeah.
Until the next, is, can we do that?
Yes, we can. He's, he's been our medical director and our, our coroner for now for his two hundred dollars a month, so I don't think one, one more, two weeks.
So is he gonna request that this become retroactive or is he?
No. We're not paying him till, till we have his signature beside.
Okay, so table to the next?
Yeah, we'll postpone it to the next meeting.
Or until state's attorney looks at it.
Yeah, we need state's attorney.
I mean, that in there too, because that's what you want to do in the next.
Yeah, just because of the the inner...
Well, and this is not my contract for coroner.
We need a motion to postpone for us. Or can the chairman just postpone?
I think we'll just postpone it to the next meeting if legal council has that opportunity to re...
Yes, and then when last time requested, I won't be on, I won't be here. If you guys want me here for that meeting, but I guess I wouldn't have anything to add to the legal ramifications.
Right.
Except that I need a coroner and a medical director on paper.
Yep.
For DOCR and, you know, to be legal, so.
And you have one right now.
We have one and he's operated this long.
Yeah.
We'll hold him, we'll hold him till whenever we get a script.
I'm thinking it'd be the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'll let him know that. We just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, no, and he's fine with that.
Not opposed to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it got to the point too with, with the changing times and, and insurance costs and stuff where, you know, doing it for community in, in his stage of life don't make sense anymore.
Okay.
I get it. Going on to the PERS issue, I guess I am asking for a, a motion and an approval to move the sheriff's department, the eligible employees from the sheriff's department to the public safety plan out of the main plan for the North Dakota state retirement. I did the research on that. I have an email and I make sure, Carmen, you guys should have it, Glenn, from North Dakota state PERS on the differences.
Did you get that?
Yeah. And right now, the employer contribution, Mercer County's picking up one point seven four percent of the employees. We pay five point two, six percent. You guys have graciously picked up the one point seven four. Now, you know, this what the state would make the employees pick up. So the total, the county pays eleven, this is what we're doing right now on the main plan. The county pays eleven percent of North Dakota PERS. The employee pays five point two, six percent.
Ten, we pay ten right now. This goes in fullback in January three for sixty percent.
Yeah, in fact, in one, one of twenty twenty four.
Twenty four.
Yeah, yeah, if we get in on this.
Okay.
Yeah, so what's the difference, what they're going up?
Right now, we're paying ten percent and employees are paying five point two six.
Yeah, they're still, the county's picking up the one point seven four percent of what the employee would pay from the seven percent, is what I'm saying. Yeah, okay, so I was right on that. So basically, what, right now, if we get in before one, one of twenty four, what the email says, we're gonna be coming in at a lower rate than if we wait. And it takes three months to get in on this plan. So that's what I'm asking for. And the difference, right now, it looks like if we get in before one, one of twenty four going forward, the difference is what the county is picking up is a point one nine percent. Is what we'd be asking for, the county's difference.
Which means you would be paying other employees less. I mean, the county would actually pay, and that's our concern. We want it fair across the board and not against us at all. We have to figure out how to do it and I want you in it as soon as possible. But I need to make a point that you'd be paying out of the county funds to the deputies and whatever, that point one nine more than the rest of the employees. And to me, that would be a point of unfairness. But I wanted to bring it to your attention so you know.
Is the. Try and save rate. So is the police or law enforcement separate?
Public safety plan, yes.
Is separate from the rest of the county employees?
Yes, it would be. It would be.
It would be or it is.
It is.
It is.
It currently is not because they're currently in all the same general plan. If we were to move to this, then law enforcement and correctional officers would be able to move into the public safety portion of this.
Which would still, which would be separate from the rest of the employees? And the rest of the employees would not be able to participate in that.
They do, they are not eligible to be.
Clarity for myself.
And yes, and Carmen's point is taken and I agree that fairness is an issue, except for the fact that our jobs are different.
I get that. I just wanted to be aware of that.
And I think initially, the state came up with the public safety plan because it gets people out of law enforcement with less years of service. Because typically, if they look at it, they pass away faster and they don't use their retirement. Okay, that other people would.
And then for more clarity. If there's a difference, a different dollar amount or, well, dollar amount, percentage, if you enroll before January one of twenty four?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. It's right here. I got the difference. If we're not on this plan until after twenty four, it's a difference of effective one, one of twenty four. Employer contribution is twelve point two or five four. Yeah, but if we're in the public safety plan, when it comes into effect, the employer contribution is ten point nine five. Before one of twenty four, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we do it now, if we wait, it's gonna cost us after twenty four. If we go to this plan. Yeah, but it's gonna go up more. Can you see what I'm saying, Gwen? Yeah, if we're reading the same email.
Okay, so just round numbers. So it'd be like ten percent now. It's gonna go up to probably eleven percent on January one. But if we wait till January one, it would be like twelve percent.
After, if we get in it after, it's twelve point five.
I'm not saying those are the exact numbers. I'm just saying, trying to make a point of a difference.
There is a difference.
If we go in now, the percentage is lower come January one than if we sign up January one. I make any sense?
I know what you're saying. The other thing is, is there?
It is confusing with the percentages.
Is there a requirement on what the employee has to put in? Or is there a requirement on what the county has to put in?
There's.
Or like a minimum or a maximum?
That's up to the commission because right now, we're supposed to put in seven percent.
It's not.
And you guys were able to put in five point two six because the county picks it up.
The county is required in a PERS so much they have to put in. And then the employee is also required. But it's the same for employee side, right Gwen? Five percent, five percent.
No, county was ten, employee was five.
Contribute ten point nine five as of right now. When January comes around, the employer is required to carry twelve point five.
But you are ready for the main plan for everybody. You're already are paying one point seven four percent of the employee's. That was agreed to back when, when we went to this plan. So that number is not setting, so, yeah, the county wants to be gracious, not to pay for it all, they can't.
Right, but we're mandated a minimum.
You're mandated on your side.
That's what I was getting, yeah.
You're mandated on your side, not on ours.
Okay.
You can make us, right now, I mean, they could make us pay the seven percent we're supposed to. And we only pay five point two six percent.
I just didn't want us to.
My issue is, I want this motion. I wanna be, I think now is the right time to save that money. And not go past, at least not go past twenty twenty four because it takes three months to do this.
Okay.
And we're into August.
I gotta have Gwen talk on this. She's done all the research and worked with this.
Go ahead.
She's getting emails that I request.
I'm not against this very, I'm not, I'm for this plan. My problem is, I'm working with our software guy right now to see if we can even implement this. Because in our software pool, I don't have anywhere to change this. I only have one spot in there for the employer contribution part of it. So I don't even know if this is something we could implement with the software I have right now. I'm working with Mark to see if it's a possibility. I would love to see this happen. I really would. But I don't think it's possible if I exist.
Well, then I would ask that she get the proper tools.
All we're waiting on is.
Because if I couldn't get the bank robber arrested, I'll ask you for the tool to get it done.
Yeah.
There's not a way for a hard entry in the software.
Boy, that's hard to hear you even say that. If you can make a payroll reduction change.
There's no hard entry option? That's why I contacted Mark and I gave him all this documentation for him to look at it to see how we could implement it. And I haven't heard that. That was two weeks ago.
Well, my only comment is gonna be, I'm sorry, Gwen. You may pull your hair out, but I think when it comes to payroll issue, we need to make our decision on payroll. And then the people working payroll get to pull their hair out and figure out how to do it. I'm sorry.
No, I agree. I'm trying to, but I just don't know if it's possible.
My other issue is, is back to the fairness issue, and I do get that, I understand that. But if I get employees retired on time or their years of service end so they can, and we get them out and they're less of a financial burden to the county, which I think we, I brought that argument before, that leaves the county more resources to pay the raises to the rest of the county employees.
I think too, like when you compare a law enforcement officer versus, I'm just gonna pick on Carmen, because she's here. The auditor, the exposure on your job is totally different, you know? That's what makes a difference to me in that two percent, you know? I think it's worth that.
I need it as a retention. I need it as, we're two employees away probably in that correctional center from having a mess, from having to pull people in out the road to help in there.
And you say this takes.
Three months to implement?
I would like to be in, yeah, three months to implement and it's August now. I would like to see us on board before January twenty four.
I would like to make a motion that we implement the endy PERS safety retirement plan for those that are eligible employees to start October first, twenty twenty three.
Okay, we have a motion by Liza, seconded by Rick. Any discussion? And basically, any contributions or changes, we can do it a different time?
We do with an amended budget if we need to.
Okay.
Travis, you accept a comment from the floor or any discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm kidding, I know. I do, I do hear the frustration. There's a lot of, it's very confusing for me. I wish they would.
Right, but October first, we need to have a contract into PERS by July thirteenth.
When I talked to PERS just a couple of days ago, they told me that we could literally start at any time and she could get it going. She said we could say August first and they could retroactive that. But she also stated that please don't wait till January because at that time, she has a lot of bigger agencies coming on and they wouldn't be able to. So that's why I chose the October date.
They need all documents completed and returned by August fifteenth in order for them. But they need the contract from us by July thirteenth for me to be able to.
And she told me that it could literally be done when I talked to her on the phone Tuesday.
And that might be some of our issues if we're talking to other people. We're getting different answers too and I get that.
That's who I talked to, was Mary Jo as well.
I think where we're at is, we can, we can okay it. But we can't okay it on their end. So if they say it's not, no longer possible, we need, we'll accept that. But we're gonna okay you to go ahead with implementing it if you can.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's all the motion is. So if we have to make a change due to whatever agency, we'll address it at that.
Yeah, if they allow it, then you got the okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seen none? Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Oh, vote aye. That motion passes. Anything else, Terry? So nothing to say there?
Nope.
I'm glad to see everybody survived the weather last night.
Aye, aye, you were busy. You were busy last night.
Okay. Now to the special assessment district procedures. Okay.
That would be, I think that group, right?
I think so. But I mean, we had it on the agenda for us to look at our assessment district procedure. Because it's just the commission.
You guys were gonna review it and then decide if you were gonna accept it or make a, you know, to make a motion to approve whatever you change, amendments, whatever. I guess that's what I came out of from our last meeting.
Were we waiting on?
I was just, if you're gonna give it the public input process going, first you need to take action one way or another on something that involves going.
Right, so we had the draft of, was it McKenzie County's?
Correct, this draft.
Yep.
Jamie's got it, copy?
Yes.
Only because I brought my bag.
Yes.
But so if we, well, Bassington, if you got copies.
Okay, we needed to have this posted.
We wanted to do, yeah, just review it and say, okay, I'm okay with this. Make a motion approved. Then we start, I'll put it into the paper and it's registered. Have comment for thirty days. I don't hear anything.
Maybe you guys don't like what you see and it'll take longer to come up. You need to add.
Get it going. So then, so talk to me and do something, you know, at least take it and start working.
We need to get started on a preliminary special assessment district procedure, which we can vote on to move forward with this. And then.
Then we post it.
Four weeks from now, we could just, we could vote it out.
We have to have a hearing and then we go from there. So.
District technicality, would it be a policy thing? Would it be a special assessment district procedure, a policy? Or, I was, I was sorry, this last, this last, this coming paper now, I was questioning that, what exactly is it? It's procedure, but is it, is it an actual policy or an ordinance or what?
I think it's an ordinance.
I didn't say an ordinance would be, I think.
Right, correct terminology.
Falls under ordinance, I think.
And the state's attorney's recommendation was to adopt what he had presented or approve what he had presented and then start the process.
And it's all guided by sentry code.
Yeah, and it's all.
And the sentry code is connected here for you guys to reference.
This is pretty much what was presented before.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that was changed. Todd reviewed. This was a final draft after Todd.
It's not the McKenzie Paul company.
I, I was used. Yes.
Yeah, he's got, Mercer County changes, he's got.
And then it has, yep.
Yep.
Statutes.
So we need to. Approve this for.
For publication.
For publication.
Correct.
And then we need to set up a like hearing. I don't, do we have to set up a public, well?
We do if it's gonna be.
After we let everybody see.
Yes.
Yeah, because the other one, we had a public here and a couple of things.
Yep.
Yeah, we've had input before, which. To me, the process, kind of the processes in some of these are, we have all kinds of input discussion. But we have nothing, no baseline.
Right.
So this puts a baseline down of a proposal on how we want to do it. Then we publicize this because now we actually have something to publicize.
Yep.
If we approve this. And then we have our public meeting, our public hearing. We can make changes.
Yep, based on comment.
Those changes, then it has to go advertise again. And then, once there are no more changes, after public input, we can approve it or disapprove it.
Well, I think you do the public hearing once for comment and then you publish it again.
After changes.
But then you don't have another hearing.
Even if you make, let's just say if we revise the whole thing. And so there's not even.
I think it would probably.
We can have additional.
For us to do with them. But I don't think we have to.
We don't have to, but we generally do.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be appropriate if we did a lot of changes.
I don't understand all the procedures, so.
Well, because we do it so often.
Ah, yeah, well.
Just a couple of highlights. What it said here is sixty percent of landowners may establish assessment district. It involves the county engineer. We have to circulate petitions for any required number of signatures. So it's, we're, anytime we do this, we have to properly notice the public. The public has the ability to comment on whether they agree with the assessment. They have the ability to petition it. And if the public has enough of the signatures, then it, I don't think we override it. But if there's not enough signatures, we can make a decision either way to proceed with it. The commission still has final say on it. But if there's, if the minimum is reached for people that don't want it, then it doesn't happen. Is how it's written.
So having the county engineer come in on this one, would that be at our cost or at their cost?
What was your question?
Whether it would be our cost or their cost.
For.
Number three.
Number three.
I would say that would be, like if Seco, we was gonna have a district, I'm saying it's reading that it would be your cost.
I just think that needs to be cleared.
That needs to be clear. I mean, that could be one of the public.
That's a part of it, yeah. And I definitely would have to, you know, have to go through Todd on that. Saying what I understand, we're giving them a procedure in order to assess their entities so they can get money to do this role. Therefore, that engineer is looking at that project. It would be the cost on that district.
Correct, that's my understanding. All, any and all fees would go to the special assessment district.
And then once the property is, has completed the petition, the special assessment screening committee is the county commissioner, the county engineer, and the county auditor. So if there's something that comes forward, it gets reviewed by
Those three?
Those three.
Again, hi, Bill Yalberg. I'm just wondering why we're even doing this. I mean, Mercer County, you know, been through the coal boom and agriculture and rural community for a long time. And all of a sudden now, because some people not, not even from Mercer County propose that we have a special assessment process. So I'm wondering why we're even looking at a process. There's no motivation, there's a few of us here today that are wondering why we're even doing this. And in particular, you're looking at Sacacawea Estates road issue to drive this, and we're living it, and we're not trying to do a special assessment.
Okay, this would just put in place a special assessment district procedure. This, this doesn't say for Sacacawea Estates. We just wanna get a procedure in place. Now, you have to follow this procedure to, for us to even move on it. We're, we're not gonna say, well, we're making a Sacacawea Estates special assessment district. You, you'd have to come in with adequate, the adequate, what's required if we adopt this for us to even move forward on it.
Well, it's, it's not just your development, Water Resource Board has also looked at other, they've talked about assessment districts numerous times for their projects. They've never done one or never requested one, but um, it, that's an entity within the county government that wants this in place too. For, for their projects. It's so and it doesn't, and then, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about Sacacawea Estates, but we've also talked about this on the Water Resource Board numerous times. So it's, it's not specific to developments, it's countywide for any type of project. Um, and just with the request from individuals within Sacacawea Estates, that's kind of spurred some of it, but it has been talked previously with other, with other entities. Um, and Water Resource Board comes to my mind, but.
There is another development that's, hasn't come to the meetings, but they're sitting on the sidelines waiting to see what, what we do.
Yeah.
Cause they're, they're looking at wanting to do something similar to what some of the residents at Sacacawea Estates are wanting to do. And that's, so they're sitting on the sidelines, they haven't come to any of the meetings yet. So this isn't just for you guys, for Sacacawea Estates, this is for any.
The county.
The county as a whole.
And we need to implement someone.
So do we need to go public?
Yeah, and, and the special assessment procedure would be for any type of project. And roads is one instance, water protection is another instance. Um, I'm trying to think of any other entity that would possibly use it, but.
Well, I can relate to it, in, in the city, it's water, sewer, and roads.
Right.
Basically. And they, they make us, they make special assessment districts even within a, within a city, it could even be a block, one block could be six square blocks or the whole city. That, that's the only thing I.
But, but to that, like a development, if they needed an upgrade to a water system or sewer system, this could be the process too.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they're booming off there. The, the state century code would be a better one.
It's based off the century code.
The one that we have here is based off the century code.
Yeah, we've just followed their, I just, it was the only one I could find that, and that's one of the counties that had one of it, I just followed it, and then Todd went through it, our state attorney. But it is all, it's all off the state, uh, the century.
Well, that's what it's, just listed in here.
It can be changed, public hearing, we just need to get started.
I think right now we just need to, I mean, this would be good for a public hearing. But I think there's just one change that I would for sure like to have amended, and at any time it says county engineer, we, we truly just contact, contract our county engineer. So I think it should say something about through the contracted county engineer at the cost of the agency for the special assessment.
Entity?
Entity for the special assessment. I think that needs to be adjusted in all the different lines.
Every single line that it's in.
Okay.
I don't think the county should have to pay the contracted fee we pay for.
Well, and I don't know if it would necessarily be county engineer either, because when I think of the Water Resource Board, they have their own engineer, the landfill has their own engineer. I think it should just be sponsoring.
Engineering costs will be, you know, but, I mean, we want the engineering information. But I just think that's one of the big things.
But if we changed it to contracting engineer, that would be clear.
Cause that should fit whoever, whatever is doing it.
Right. So would you need to see a draft or if you just made a motion to make that change throughout the document?
I, I could just make a motion to make that change throughout the document, cause I think we need to get this
Contracting, from county to contracting engineer.
At the cost of
Is it sponsor? I think that's how it's worded in here.
The sponsor of the special assessment.
Got it.
For making changes, I would like to see something like.
Yeah, every time it says county engineer, that is, that would be adjusted to that.
What was your comment, Rick?
Well, if you're making changes on this, where you know, I would, I would like just in my opinion, it's always sixty percent is low. I would, I would like to see like a two-thirds of them, like a sixty-seven percent or, you know, somewhere in there. Seventy percent, somewhere in there, just to, then you have a more of a majority of those. That's just a little graph. If you get two-thirds of the people saying yes.
Well, she hasn't made a motion yet.
They're still working there?
Still working on it.
Oh, I said seventy-five percent.
You said seventy percent, seventy. Yep.
You're talking on line one. What was presented to us, right, Liza?
I'm sorry, what?
You're, you're, you're talking about on line one, or item number one, the board of county commissioners upon receipt of a petition of?
Seventy percent or more of the landowners, correct.
Yeah, at least it's two-thirds then.
That's what I'm thinking, you have two out of three people that are, other than barely one over two, you know, just a little over half.
Can you change county engineer to contracted engineer? Okay?
Good for me to make a motion, guys?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the Mercer County Special Assessment District Procedure slash ordinance. I think we should say ordinance, updated draft with the date of five twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. With the following amendments, on line number one, the percentage will be changed to seventy percent or more. And then anywhere in this document where it states the county engineer, it will actually be changed or amended to the contracted engineer at the cost of the specialist, I'm sorry, the sponsor of the special assessment.
So at cost of district. I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Liza, second by Rick, to adopt the special assessment district procedure slash ordinance. Um, with amended changes for publication. Is there any discussion? Question?
What about how the assessments are distributed? We talked briefly about that before, if I, you know, my money, whether I die, is that in that document?
Yeah, it's in number fifteen pursuant to North Dakota Century Code forty-three twenty-three oh one, the county commission cell point. Three county resident members of a commission which shall be known as the special assessment commission. And then the next one, the special assessment commission shall inspect the project and determine proportionate benefit pursuant to Century Code forty twenty-three oh seven. And the commission will prepare a complete list of benefits and assessments set forth. And then it goes extract, total amount. Kind of, that, that committee will bring a recommendation on how it should be assessed. So it's in there, and it would be members of the district that's being created would have the say on how that's done. So, good question. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? See none? Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Alvo, aye. That motion is approved. We'll get that.
I will get it in the paper, I'll get it registered, and then we'll go for thirty days. Then I'll put it on the agenda for it. Okay, I, I do it for thirty days, but we need to have a public hearing.
At the end of that thirty days.
At the end of that.
Is it at the end of the thirty days? Because I wanna publicly, I wanna make sure people know there's gonna be a public hearing, which I could include on the thirty day.
Yeah, so you just say the public hearing will be on?
I gotta get in the paper and then start for it in the paper.
Are you trying to start in this coming week's paper then?
Would it be like the week of August seventh? Could I get it?
It's Thursday, Dave's lines, so is that August tenth is up Thursday that week?
Yeah.
As long as you get, I would say for sure by Monday at noon.
I could do it today.
Yeah, then there will be no problem getting it.
What's that?
Yep, I have the public hearing first, then the thirty days starts like that.
That's what I wasn't sure.
Okay. Yeah.
It has to go in the paper though first.
Like if we're gonna have a public hearing, it has to go in the paper for two weeks, right?
So the people.
To say, hey, we have a public hearing, so that means.
But you're not gonna have a thirty day comment hearing.
Until after.
After the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so then I'll get that one, two, and then our.
Cindy, do you know offhand, is there a requirement for, for, again, cause we're not doing a thirty day comment period, we're doing a notice of public hearing. Is there a requirement for how many papers or how many weeks?
It might be different for this, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, if not, I don't.
I'm thinking normally we do two weeks, so if we did the public hearing.
I think we'd have to make it for the first meeting in September.
In September, I think.
September sixth meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, so it'll be notice.
That would be the public hearing.
That would be the public hearing, yes.
Correct.
Do we wanna set a time for that?
To approve, I will get it in the paper for two weeks.
So September sixth, at what time?
And then after that, then we put it in.
Right, then we'd have the comment period.
September sixth. Yep.
We should set a time for that though.
Yes.
And you, you're gonna mention September sixth, public hearing on it.
Yeah, that's what we're.
We need that, that's a big one.
At eleven, Carmen?
Probably make that a motion.
At eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for the special assessment district proceeds procedures ordinance for September sixth at eleven AM.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Any discussion? See none? Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Alvo, aye. That motion passes. Okay. Okay.
One hour old, bro.
Yep. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the preliminary budget. Motion for approval.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
And I can get your copies of that too. Just let me know. Copies. Okay, so I want Dawn and Glenn to come up here, because we have been working on the numbers. And we, we're not ready yet, and so what we're asking is for a special meeting so that we can get our numbers together, make sure we've covered everything. And we're looking at August eighth or ninth. One of those days for a special meeting to go through preliminary budget and then approve it. Eighth or ninth, one of those days.
Yeah, I'm on vacation then, so I won't be available.
What works for you, Liza?
It is a Tuesday, yes, it's a Tuesday and a Wednesday.
Per, well, okay. Works for other people's schedules, I'm gonna ask if it could be the Wednesday. Tuesdays are my deadline day.
She's on the whole week.
Yes.
You're on the whole week, right?
Um, I come back in the afternoon of the tenth, so that won't work, because we gotta have it done.
Approved.
Well, cause I'd rather like all five of us here for a bunch of discussion.
All right.
Can we do anything the rest of the week?
But it is a preliminary.
I still.
I, I don't disagree with you.
But I want I'm not the king, but I really would be impressed that we all five try and schedule for all five of us to be here.
What? Our, our deadline dates the tenth?
Right.
Whether it's the sixth of August.
Right.
Oops. Well?
Friday.
Yeah, how about this Friday?
We need time. That's why we're asking for this.
Um, yeah.
We do, because we got numbers.
The state form that we use is pages and pages and pages and pages of spreadsheets, and we are trying to make sure that every single number on there is right and.
How Friday is a little too soon?
Yeah, I don't know, but I don't do your work, but I'm not that.
Sounds like work. To me, it doesn't matter if it's Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
Yeah. I can make any of those days work.
I can make any day work. I was just trying to get some advice.
I appreciate that, Jean, but, I guess, I want you guys to have the accurate numbers too, so.
Rick, any?
No.
Jamie?
Well, then Wednesday worked for me.
Wednesday.
Is Wednesday too late?
No.
Cause again, made a request, cause I don't matter. So the only time, reason I'd say something other than Wednesday is beyond me. Cause Dan.
I mean, obviously, it's, we're, we're, for Liza on Tuesday, but not on Wednesday. What, can you just overrule me? How all?
Dan will be the slap you, but it definitely overrules you. In my opinion.
Okay.
Oops.
Um, so nine at nine?
Yeah, nine at nine.
Yep.
A special, what would we call it?
Special budget meeting.
Special budget, well, we have to have a name for it, not just special meeting.
Yeah, special preliminary budget approval meeting.
To a specific subject where not, nothing else can be discussed.
Yep.
Okay, so a special budget meeting on?
August ninth at nine.
Motion? You need a motion?
I would motion it. Would you want me to motion it, or you can motion it?
I can motion it.
Yep.
I, uh, motion to have a special meeting on August ninth at nine AM for a preliminary budget overview.
Approval. Approval.
Approval.
Yeah.
For preliminary budget approval. Okay.
Okay, motion by Jean, second by Rick, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
I, I think Cindy the other panned up.
You have to wait till we're done.
Yeah, well, wait till. Liza?
Sorry.
Aye.
All would I, that motion passes, but go ahead Cindy, what's your question?
No, I don't, I would be here because I'm in state utilization, so I don't, I don't, that's a lot to say.
Okay.
Is this in regards to the budget or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, I'm just wondering what you're, what you're up to if you're.
I just would like to say that I haven't issue with the county doing across the board increase once again. I'm still confused as to why the department heads' requests haven't been supplied to you. Wait another year for the wage study that may or may not happen. There is a wage study, there was a wage study committee in twenty twenty that was given approval from the board to update to the, update to the current one, yet it has never been followed. Is the wage study in the budget, is there someone available to get it done by next year? Todd doesn't like them, so is it gonna get implemented? Uh, I emailed all of you the budget, I submitted along with the wage study that I updated with everybody's years of service. I had sent it to Gwen and Carmen in on March twenty-seventh. I did have mistakes, Jamie found a few, there's probably more in there. Jean, you told me last, you told me one time that Gary made too much. If, if you had done your homework, you would know he retired the year the wage study was done and should have made twenty-nine more cents an hour than he, than he made. So he did not make too much money. You also stated in last year's budget that I got a ten percent raise, I did not, PERS was simply fixed going forward. I have more responsibility than Gary had, I have three less certi- certified assessors, which means four more cities to certify. He didn't do GIS, and he had a vehicle with gas paid to take home every day. Yet I can't get you to even give me his wage without a vehicle because it's not in my budget. Todd's wage was not in that budget either. Please correct my budget this year and don't make us wait another year again for a wage study. Michelle, Dawn, Terry, Kent, Rachel, to name a few, have been either elected or recently appointed, yet are way closer to the predecessor's wage than I am in my sixth year of doing the actual tax director job. Along with my prior nine years in the office, in that office and three years in the auditor's office. Gary would be making eight dollars and forty-nine cents more than me an hour if he was still here. I'm asking you to correct my wage to the new protocol of giving the outgoing person's wages. Jen's wage for sure needs to be corrected, it's not fair to make her pay because you guys are mad at me and blow me off every year. I saw in the video that Carmen put department fees on, on your sheets, I wasn't asked for P and Z fees, city assessing fees, or how much money my assessing brings in, which is a lot. Nobody should be at a negative one, which you have on that sheet there with the steps in the years of service. Um, could you please at least fix those, there's, I mean, the cleaning crews, the dispatchers, they're at a negative one. Doing a, a one dollar across the board is not gonna help them, they're still gonna be at a negative one. And maybe we should knock everybody's wage down to a one, like mine at, at, in my seventeenth year, I bet I won't be the only big mouth then.
Anything else on the preliminary budget?
Can we talk about Scott? Did we talk to him about what we were looking at for a wage study? I don't think we did, Dawn.
No.
No.
They haven't brought anything to us for that.
Dawn, um, we found money, um, within the monies that we have to do a wage study. Because every department that came in here on that budget day that we had was saying, hey, we need to do something with these wages. So we're kind of proposing, um, to do this wage study next year and then keep it up. We have to be dedicated every year, the jobs, descriptions have to have, every department has to be kept up once we have this wage study. And we were setting aside about forty thousand that we found to do a wage study, to get people to a level that's fair. And even to do the wage studying, we have to update all the job positions, so we'll start from there. To me, it's a starting point.
I, I think the problem we ran into before is, A, the wage study, as far as I know, actually wasn't adopted in. And, and B, we run into elected officials get to actually have their own budget and decide the own, their own wages for their own people that they want to hire at. So we, we would, yeah, so like if an elected official, we can only determine what their budget is gonna be, we can't tell them what they're gonna hire people at. So I think that's what we were running into before.
I agree with that, but.
And so it would have to be that everybody would have to say that, yes, we're all agreeing that we are going to abide by this. So wage study, you know, because if we have certain department heads that are like, no, I'm not gonna go by that, we're still gonna be in the same spot we are right now.
I, I guess I'm just looking at a wage study as a starting point to see where we should be from a third objective, I mean, how is it gonna get better, Liza?
Well, because if we have department heads though that choose to do their own raises and choose to hire their people.
I don't think there's that many doing that, actually, Terry came in, I thought he did an excellent job at keeping within his budget, and I, I agree, yeah, you have to still stay.
And it's about their own, it's their own budget, Carmen, so they get to determine, unless we have everybody's buy-in for it, as to what we're gonna follow for this, we're gonna run into this kind of issue again, I think.
I mean, to me, it says we do, and I had every, I heard every, every department had come in here and say, hey, you know, we need to adjust these things. I'm, and that's the only reason why that came up, Liza.
That's the only thing that I've noticed, right, is that, you know.
You're right, you're right.
If department heads don't buy into it.
For starters, it was used, certain people used it, certain people didn't, and certain, yeah, and it was, it was never said you have to follow the wage spending when you're hiring.
Some did. And that's.
But at the same token, um, you're right, then you have to hear people coming in or whatever experience, and sometimes that's hard for the department heads to do.
Right.
You know, and so I think that's maybe where that got off a little bit too, is because, you know, when I hire somebody that's been working at a job for five years, and then they come to work for me. Do I give them five years' experience? No, because they haven't been doing my job.
Right.
And so, so I think that was where it was starting to become an issue, is because we weren't sure where to put them when they came in, so.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, I just.
I think it just needs everybody's buy-in, if that's what we want to do, we need to have everybody's buy-in for it, and it needs to be adhered to then. Because I don't want to have rogue ones, and then we got people.
There's many, many thoughts that go through my head on these, on these, um, sal wages, not salary's wages. Because I hear so many different angles. So Gwen's worked in the auditor's office for ten years, and now she accepts a job in the, um, recorder's office. And suddenly her wa- sal, wages she's getting in the auditor's office, she goes to recorder's office, she wants the same pay in the recorder's office now as she was getting in the auditor's office. Because she's been here for ten years, but then the new person getting hired in the auditor's office gets, let's just say effectively, the same wage that Gwen was getting when she was there. The, I, I just don't know where, where I, where I would sit on this, because then are the employees asking for a wage chart that would have specific wages in each department? Or specific wages by years of service within the county? Or specific wages based on, um, or, like, um, not necessarily seniority, but, uh, their qualifications coming from another area? I mean, there's, there's several approaches that we as a commission could probably use. And being very experienced in that, in that area, what I would even probably understand looking at is a, is a hourly wage schedule for everybody in the, in the county. Which would probably mean effective wage cuts for some people and pay raises for other people, which would really create a bunch of turmoil again. It happens. I don't get along with you, I've seen it, I don't get along with you, and I, I don't care for you as a supervisor, so now I'm gonna bid a job in another department just to get away from you, you know, take a pay cut, I've seen it happen. And, but then I go to that other department and I'm saying, well, I was getting one, two, three, uh, wages in the department it came from, I should get that here. Well, no, you shouldn't, uh, because you, you moved to a totally different apartment. And every entity I've worked in, you don't get to laterally move, you take a pay decrease no matter where you move to. And then the new person that filled that position didn't get the outgoing person's wages. They basically started at the bottom, and there was some discretion, I mean, some people got a year's worth of service, some people got five, some negotiated their, because your starting salary, you could negotiate anywhere, and you could negotiate it right to the top. So I'm just a little bit beside myself on, on this whole wage, wage thing of how, how we should approach it. If I was a deputy treasurer or if I was a deputy auditor?
Which made hiring coming and going really easy, but you would imagine that people who had been here ten years weren't happier than the people who walked in and grew up here for one, were making the same thing they were. So, like I said, I don't know.
But that kind of comes in any job, I mean, like when I was fresh out of nursing school, I made being near the same as some of the nurses that had been on the floor twenty-five years, because it was just a. Right, the power plants are the same way, and so.
So, I mean, it solves the problem really.
I feel terrible for those people for twenty-five years, but that market.
Some of those positions have kind of the same job duties. Within the courthouse here, each office has a lot of job duties, so it's really not the same across the board in my respect.
But for the sake of contradicting discussion here, that seems to be part of the, what I'm getting told is the, Carmen should be getting paid more than Gwen. You know, because my job is more important, well.
I wish we could have to go by difficulty of job, it makes no difference, you go from a laborer to a equipment maker, it's the same piece, you have to go by difficulty of job, and that's what they do in these, these studies.
That's what they request, requested, and it isn't said that's what they're getting.
I know, but you don't even have our numbers. Then we ask for sixteen, that's what I see. How do I get Jenny closer to my wage, she shouldn't be a thirteen to twelve dollars less than me, I guess. Because, just because planning zoning wasn't on the wage study, you're going back planning, how do I get that fixed? I'm not gonna get it fixed by waiting another year for the number. I mean, there are some, I mean, individuals ended up paying it at one, why can't you look at those, if you're getting in, and say, hey, we're in six seasons, and they're just putting in six seasons, then you're getting a dollar an hour. I mean, if you don't have the numbers, what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do? Or Todd, or. I think you don't want numbers to start it if your budget's going down. So Rick, you send people a square year, talk about start at the bottom, that's not what's happening around here. It needs to be consistent.
And that's why.
But at the same time, I had, I've been told that I can't tell you what, what you can pay your employees, so just based on that quote alone, then you've generated the problem. Not, not the commission, because we can't tell you what, I've been told consistently, I can't tell you what you gotta pay your deputy senior department, I can't tell Terry.
Why do all the other commies have the wage studies with elected officials on there and pay all that money for them to be in the study if they don't have to follow? That makes zero sense, they should have just done appointed people then.
So to Jean's statement, then any of the positions that fall under the commission, the commission should be able to set what those are. I mean.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying, so like, and, I, I mean, Cindy's here, but like, say Jim or whoever can, you know, different departments that fall under our jurisdiction. We should be able to adjust those wages, wages as the commission sees fit.
The hourly.
The hourly, but we couldn't.
I've been told we can't.
Yeah.
All we can do is they.
We, we can't test the elected ones, the elected, people that report to the elected departments, meaning auditor, sheriff.
Right, I've been told we can't. They, they turn in a budget, and we can approve the budget.
Right.
We can cut those monies, which indirectly is saying, no, we're not gonna pay your deputy that much money, or yourself.
But what about the ones that?
How we would regulate the hourly, other than doing it that way, if we can't regulate the hourly people within those departments.
But if they don't fall within those departments that are under an elected official?
Technically, you guys do, because you can cut everybody's budget.
But we can't, but we can't tell them, you've cut, this person's paid, we can just cut the budget and they decide what they want to do.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying we want to, but I'm saying, how, how does somebody that doesn't fall underneath?
You get into a touchy.
We want to follow as an elected official, because.
Because I've read.
We want to work together.
I've read state statute, statute on that also. When it comes to the budgets, we can't cut Terry's budget in half. Because I'm, I'm gonna say, Terry, I want you and one other deputy, that's it. I can't do that, we can't do that, we're limited.
And I'm not saying doing that either, I'm just saying those people.
What she's referring to as far as regulating even the, where the wages would be, if, if I'm reading what you're trying to say.
I'm saying we have control over the budget, because too hard you can cut it, absolutely, it's been done.
Yeah, it's, but we gotta.
Well, and, like, I mean, we see demonstration that Terry has really tried to, I think, I think he's really tried to follow what we do, the things, because he's, you know, demonstrated that he's been pretty good about, you know, I'm hiring this person, but, you know, I'm gonna lose as much of it, you know, that kind of thing.
Yep.
I actually tried to follow the wage study when I hired Alice. Um, I went in and kind of had an updated version, and I went in and kind of figured out where she fell. So I think most of us would try to do the right thing, now, if I would have tried to, tried to hire Alice at more than I was making when I left, I think you guys probably would have caught that when we did.
But that's where we run into trouble with people following it and not being able to follow it, is then some new hires are being, gonna get paid more than others in that department that have been there. And like for Candy in a hiring position right now, or even Terry, that's where we're falling in, is your newcomers are getting paid more than your existing employees, and that's kind of a slap to the face. Newcomers are getting paid more than your existing employees and that's kind of a slap to the face. To them.
What did, what did your, uh, what did your predecessor make?
Well, this, we could talk about it in a special meeting, because that would be specific to the budget. Yeah, I, I know you won't be.
I'm not trying to rush you out, Cindy. I just, I didn't.
It was a question. So.
Because it was, some of these salaries were not included in our budget top list.
So when we get to the preliminary budget. If the commissioners wanna make changes, that's the time to make the changes. So. Do we have the public hearing after we approve the preliminary budget or is it before? Where's that?
The public hearing is before we, right before we approve the final.
Okay, so we only.
For the preliminary? I thought it was for the final.
I think it's just the final.
You were right, it was September.
But what I'm getting back to is on Wednesday next week. If there's changes to the preliminary budget, that would be the time to do it. And then we approve the preliminary budget at that meeting.
Remember, you wanna prove it high and then we can only go down.
Wait, no, that's what I'm getting. Right, so I'm, what, what I'm getting at is if one of the commissioners wants to increase the budget somewhere, that's the time to do it. And then it can be voted on.
Can we then get. Accurate numbers of. At the preliminary budget will have accurate numbers and that's what each employee is asking.
Yeah, we'll have to have all those in, in that budget.
Yeah, that was your number, right there.
But that'll have to be incorporated, so we know where all the mills fall.
Yeah, I went the dollar. So that's what you'll see at the preliminary meeting.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget?
I have that HR position.
Yeah, uh, Liza has HR to be put in the preliminary budget. Did you have a number for that?
I was thinking, um, now remember, going high, because I'm not sure where we're gonna be at or anything like that, because I had a few different options I was thinking of. Um, so if we were to actually do the full-time HR position, I was thinking sixty-five, so that way we'd cover benefits and then what we would hire that person at as well. Now, I also had a couple other thoughts where maybe if we did the part-time, it would actually be lower than that, but like I said, I wanted to have it at the high mark for that.
So you want sixty-five thousand budgeted for HR?
Correct.
And then after budget, we'll determine what we do.
What that would actually be.
Okay. And any recommendations?
I have three different options that I was gonna bring up. And a lot of it actually would include some of this with the wage studies. It would be with dealing with any grievances. It would be with any of the. Um, benefits that we have basically, and then just dealing in general with other. Items that come up as far as that and it would, I had a couple things that I sent out earlier in regards to what that posting would look like. It would be something that we would work on later as far as what that would actually include. And for the posting and stuff too, but I just need to have the monies in there to know that we can actually do that. Or to see where that would be actually for budget wise, whether we need. Full-time would work or whether we definitely have to go part-time or if we can mix that in with another. Um, position as well too. So I have three different ideals to bring forth, but I just need to have the monies.
Liza, why not try bringing Wendy in? So then you know what it is, because everybody's gotta buy into this, Liza.
Because I do not like having contractors come in, because that usually ends up ending to be a lot more money in the end and that's not a permanent solution to what we need for our county.
Hard time is a contractor.
I answered the question.
And at this point, it's a request from a commissioner to have in the budget. It may or may not be approved. And we'll go from there.
I do know one thing that I did, I have a printout. If I'd have known about it, I could have brought it along for, and I can get it for you that I had a printout of. I was looking at this, the HR position and the things that go in there. It was surprisingly how much it actually fit into that. On that printout that I had there. I was surprised at how much. I'll get it, get it through next time I come, next week I'll bring it along.
And, and I know, like Gwen, you're doing a lot of this, the benefits stuff and stuff. It's not. Hope you don't feel it's a slap to your face doing this, but I feel like. There's maybe more, because we are at the threshold of almost a hundred employees to where, I mean, HR's a good idea. Maybe more could be done that you guys don't have time to do in your day, because you have other auditor duties to do as well. So I don't want, I don't want you to feel.
Is there something that's missing and that I'm not being told about? I mean, that's what I don't understand. And we've done this. I've been there seven years now and it's been this way since I've been there, which I'm not saying things can't change, but. What's missing? That's what I don't understand. What do you want an HR person to do that we're not already doing?
And I think, you know, like I said, I want more about our grievances, about our policies and procedures, our handbook done, updated and, and all those different things to go on through. And I want you to have.
What? To give a hundred percent.
Right. And I want you to have more time to just do what you need to do at the auditor's office. I think it's just been something that appears to be overlooked a bit and just kinda rushed through. And I wanna make sure that we have enough time put into that HR position where people can really feel that they've been having their issues addressed.
And in the private, in the private world, and of course I get always slapped in the face on this one, because this is government. But the HR person is separated from everybody and basically reports to the CEO. There's no in-between and so they're totally off to the side to keep them away from any prejudice. And then they, they report and they handle a lot of, like you said, the. Not the person-to-person disputes, but they look into like. If you got a question on your benefits or of that nature, they look into it, which then you don't have to. And you do your auditor work. You're not. I know, but it's part of your, it's part of your work, but this would.
I'm working on that. I have that in the works. We've already gotten an update type thing going with that already. Um, grievances fall underneath that policy book. You know, so any that has come out, we're dealing with that. There's some things you guys don't see, because it gets handled on the back with us.
And like I said, I met with all the department heads. I want us to work together and I am not against an HR at all. It's awesome. But you guys won't even try bringing Wendy in just to try it. We've all gotta buy into this. And, and most of the biggest problem is nobody follows policy. How can you have a policy if nobody's gonna follow it? And it's gotta start here with the commission. And not micromanage to the point where we gotta start trusting each other. That's all I'm asking.
I can see that, I can see that happening the other way though too, and that happens a lot. Is that you just flip that coin around and it. We're, we're, I'm micromanaging or I'm doing this or I'm doing that and it's like. And then the things that we need to get done don't get done either. I see it both ways.
We have, we are hired, department heads.
I get that.
If there's something we're doing wrong, then you have to like policy, okay, tell us what we're doing wrong. Give us a chance to correct it. That's why we have policy. Why is that so against it?
All right, let's, let's move on. Um, let's get to the other business. June recorders fees?
I move to accept the June recorder's fees of four thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Motion by Liza, second by Jamie. Accept the June recorder fees. Any discussion? Seeing none. Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, duplicate warrant requests. Can we do those at the same time, Tom?
I'll see why not.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the duplicate warrant requests?
I'll move to approve both duplicate warrant requests to Hazen Health Pharmacy, one for eighty-seven eleven, and I believe the second one was for seventy-three fifty-four.
Okay, motion by Jamie, second by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion is approved. Um, we need to appoint a commission delegate for the North Dakota Association County Annual Conference. Um, I think we've typically had the chair eminently previously. I plan to attend, so.
Okay, appoint yourself.
I move to appoint Travis Frye as our commission delegate for the Nidaco Annual Conference.
Motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jean. Any discussion? Seeing none. Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion's approved. Um, just a quick update, uh, conference is October eighth through the tenth. I think we get early bird through the end of the month, so if commissioners are looking to attend, we should probably. Uh, notify the auditor's office that we would like to be there. Emergency battery?
Oh, the only thing is, uh, UPS, the huge UPS that takes care of everything. The batteries got really old and to a point where, yeah, they had to be replaced, so we, today. They should be here to put in, um, to maintain it. But I got this ordered because we got no choice, eight thousand six hundred fourteen dollars for new batteries. They should be here in two to three weeks.
Did we have a failure with the battery system?
We had a failure, yes. But here's the thing, what happened there is we let them get too old. We did not let that happen. We can't. They should be. No. And I'm thinking, we could take this out of our emergency fund.
I would think so.
I know we have money in the maintenance, but technically. Well, that was, that was my, that was my question. That, that was gonna be a question on that. Like, why does that have to come out of building and grounds? No, this is emergency, because this thing cannot go down.
What's the lifespan on those typically?
I got a question about.
I think they said something like four years, but.
Four years, okay.
I know that we should be changing them all. We'll figure that out.
Six to nine years. These are at nine years plus. The previous auditors should have been doing it incrementally instead of getting one big bill. We would have done like.
Right, yeah.
I don't know what the numbers are, but that's my description.
Are these sealed batteries or lead acid?
There's like four different shells of four of them.
They're sealed.
They're sealed, yeah.
Everything running if there's a power failure.
If we're gonna take it out of the emergency fund, I'd like a motion.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve the emergency battery coming out of the emergency fund?
For eight thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion is approved. And weather statement?
Weather statement, Craig had mentioned that, that if, I don't know if there will be or anything, but he just said that we needed to make it known that the storm we had. The devastation that's up by the, along the lake. That, uh, if there would be any declaration or anything, it needs to be, we'd need to publicly acknowledge at this point. We know that there was this storm here and that if it does, if there's anything with EM that's.
Okay, well, here's the thing. Yeah, I know the weather services is out there to look at it, but we declare an emergency if it affects the county.
I'm not declaring an emergency. I'm just saying that the statement that.
Okay.
So it is, is public, that unrecorded, if it does come up, we do, we have, we have, we acknowledge.
And what did I, what I would do as the auditor is I get ahold of Travis, we'd sign it, and then it would be in effect, an emergency declaration. Officially, once we meet again, then we'll officially accept it, but until then, it's on whatever we need and it's usually to get resources. That's why we need it.
So like on that specific weather event, I don't know if we normally declare anything, do we? It's usually like a blizzard or a flood. A windstorm tornado really.
The county infrastructure, the public have to, you know, and granted, we respond to their emergencies and things.
Right.
As far as a declaration and it would be bringing in other resources to help us.
But I mean, Rick's basically, he talked to Craig and we acknowledged that there was a weather event last night, but if we need to go further, we will.
It's there, in case it's there. It's not, not that we have to do this, it's just.
We're acknowledging that there was a, a storm last night.
Yep, and it's done, so we.
And I did contact, well, part of the. Portfolio update, but I did contact the road department and there was nothing on their behalf that they had to do with this weather event. So I, I, I checked with them and he said, no. They didn't have to. There are no washed out roads. There was, there was a grain bin laying in the middle of eighteen oh six that. I guess got looped out the road. That was it. So our, our road department had nothing.
Okay, uh, Jean, any other updates? Portfolio updates?
Uh, no, I just, uh, road department, just, uh, I, other than. My other portfolio holders, they have nothing.
Okay, Rick? Okay, I don't have any updates. Liza?
I do not.
Jamie?
Candy did the interviews. Um, I think was gonna offer some positions, but again, wages, wage is a factor, so, well, more to come on that. Think that's it.
All right, that's everything on our agenda. Meeting adjourned. See everybody next week.